All right, we are live.
This call is now being recorded.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, the special meeting of the committee for June 18th, 2020. I'm Paul Krikorian, Chair of the Committee, and as we are remotely meeting, I'd like to start by asking the Clerk to call the role, please.
Councilmember Krikorian?
Here.
Councilmember Price? Councilmember Corret?
President.
Councilmember Lemonfield? Councilmember Bonham?
Bonham here.
Three members present in the chair and Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you very much, members and everyone else on the call. At this special meeting, we have a number of departments on the agenda that we're going to be going through, and I hope that we're going to be able to move through them fairly expeditiously. I just wanted to remind members and the public who may be listening that today, we will not be finalizing any recommendations for the budget on these departments or otherwise, because all of the committee's potential changes, recommendations for changes in the budget, will have to be considered together at our meeting of June 29th, so that we can ensure that the final package of all of the recommendations is a comprehensive plan that is balanced, so that we can weigh one against the other. So any recommendations that we'll be making today, or directions we'll be offering, are for the CLA to go back and incorporate into a final report that we'll be taking up on the 29th. So there are a number of motions on the agenda today, and we'll be taking those up when we take up the relative departments, and the relative departments are going to be aging, we'll start with aging, followed by animal services, followed by cannabis regulation, information technology, the Public Works Board, and building and safety. So with that, I'm going to go first, before we begin discussions of the departments, to public comment, and we'll go ahead and take, we'll limit public comment for this meeting to one hour, and we can, because I think we have enough time for it, we'll allow two minutes per speaker today, and let's go ahead and begin that now. So with the first speaker for public comment, and I'd like to remind all of the people who are on the queue waiting to speak, please remember that when you are called to speak, your device, the volume on your device has to be turned down so that we don't get that feedback that makes it harder for us to hear you. So with that, let's go ahead and call our first speaker, please.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, for the record, there was a community impact statement submitted by the Los Angeles Neighborhood Council for item number one, Council File 20-0600. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and call our, oh, and if you could just announce also the call-in information and the process by which we take speakers, please.
Yes, sir. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda today should call 1-669-254-5252, and use meeting ID number 1619758696, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to keep. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Let's go ahead and call our first speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Lisa Hart. I'd like to speak on item number two.
Go right ahead, please.
Thank you. I'm with the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance, and we want to thank you for reinstating the funding for the Office of Climate Emergency Mobilization. As you probably know, both the Office and the Climate Emergency Commission were designed by community-based organizations representing frontline communities who bear the brunt of environmental impact, in order to ensure that those communities have a voice in finding solutions to environmental injustice. We don't want to be stifling voices of communities of color, and so we hope that you will reinstate the funding for the Climate Emergency Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Go right ahead, Speaker. Hello? All right. Sorry, I'm afraid we'll have to go to the next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, hello, my name is Terri Saucier, and I'd like to speak on Agenda Item Number Two.
Go right ahead, please.
Thank you. I'm on the Board of the Tarzana Neighborhood Council, but I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance, and I too would like to thank you for reallocation of the $500,000 to the Office of Climate Emergency Mobilization. But I'm here to please ask you to restore the $200,000 funding for the Climate Emergency Commission. The Commission is a vital part of the Office of Climate Emergency Mobilization, and would not only be responsible for overseeing this department and helping keep it on track, but most importantly, would provide a voice to communities classified as most impacted by the environmental justice by Calen BioScreen, and these frontline communities deserve a seat at the table, so I'm asking you to please restore the funding for the Climate Emergency Commission. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Miran Kalajian, Item Number Two.
Go right ahead, sir.
I am actually a board member of the Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council. I am also on the Sustainability Alliance. I would like to say thank you for allocating the $500,000 for the Office of the Climate Emergency Mobilization. That is very important and very essential with the climate changes it's going, and you can also please restore the funding of the $200,000 for the Climate Emergency Commission as well. The Commission is an integral part of the Office, and it would oversee the Office and make sure it's on track. The Commission would be composed of people who represent the communities classified as most impacted by environmental injustice by the call Environment is Green, and I thank you for all your support, and to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Marta Dina Arguello, Executive Director of Positions for Social Responsibility, and I would like to speak on Item Number Two.
Go right ahead.
Good afternoon. I am one of the organizations that was, the architect of the Climate Emergency Mobilization Department. We believe, one, we want to thank you for restoring part of the funding, and think that in this moment, it is critically important that this department be fully funded, that the Commission be fully funded. It is our pathway to adjust recovery from COVID, and to address the oncoming crises that climate change will continue to bring to our community. This is the way you do justice-based policy, by establishing a commission of communities who are frontline and impacted both by climate, by COVID, and by civil, by the civil uprisings, where we are demanding that we move our priorities to people-centered policy, so we can get justice right, so we can actually transition Los Angeles's economy to a just economy that puts the health of the majority of Angelinos at the center. So we ask that you restore all the funding, and that you move quickly to restore the funding on the Commission that can help you lead the way to truly participatory government, participatory budgeting, and the ability to actually redirect and reinvest in communities and community health. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, Rob Quan, I'd like to speak on Items One, Two, and Three.
Go right ahead.
Comments will be brief, but I think it's important to put the budget requests into, for the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office, in the context, we could have covered the entire cost of this office and more with Chief Michael Moore's drop payout. It's shameful that essential services are being slashed and potentially eliminated to cover raises for LAPD. I hope that if this isn't part of the motion that's already in effect, that the Council actually request an actuarial study of the drop retirement program, as they have the full power to do, and obligation to do, to ensure that it is actually deficit-neutral, as was promised to voters. You actually have the power to end that program for future entrance, so that's something that you definitely need to explore, and, you know, in line with that, over the past few years, I've developed an appreciation for Councilmember Corret, because of whatever shortcomings people might say he had, he was the most committed Councilmember on combating climate change, and that's why it's so disgusting to see him unwilling to even consider cuts for LAPD's budget. To be clear, the other day, he didn't just vote against cuts, he actually voted against getting a report that would have simply provided options for what we might be able to do. You know, prioritizing LAPD's budget over combating climate change puts your values front and center, Councilmember. So I'm hopeful that this department moves forward, but I think we have to put all of this in context with the reality that major services are being put on the chopping block because people unwilling to combat LAPD's exorbitant influence in City Hall that is depriving our ability to do anything of real change. The mayor today is saying that he's hoping to see a reduction of homelessness in five to six years. You know, he came into office saying that he wanted to eliminate and homelessness, then he said he wanted to bring it to a functional zero, and now we're going to likely see some first reduction in five to six years. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted, I have technical difficulties, but I just wanted to announce that I am here and now part of the meeting. This is Bob Lemonfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lemonfield. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Mendoza Price, and I'm calling to speak on Item One. I'm calling from the Spainuter Project of Los Angeles, and I am sad to report that I just found out that this meeting was moved to today as opposed to next Monday, so there were other leadership that were planning on calling in, as well as constituents who have used Spainuter vouchers in the past and have a lot of interest in seeing that go forward, so unfortunately, I'm only, I'm going to be the only one speaking, but again, I'd just like to encourage the Council to recommend that funding be restored to last year's amount, because any cuts that we do to Spainuter funding now are not only going to result in animals that our city is going to be forced to euthanize, people's beloved pets, that we're going to have flooding into the shelter because they couldn't get them fixed, but we're also going to be losing money long-term, because it's really expensive to care for these animals when they inevitably enter to these shelters. So again, it is a moral imperative and a fiscal imperative, and I just encourage the Councilmembers to take a look at some of the research on the cost-saving benefits to Spainuter, as well as, you know, just thinking about all these animals that are going to be coming in over the next few years, that we're going to be unfortunately completely losing our grip on our no-kill ambitions, and we're going to be forced to euthanize. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope that we're going to have an opportunity in the future to have the leadership, as well as constituents, call in with a little bit more notice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Brian Snyder, Item Two.
Go right ahead.
And I'm from, thank you, I'm from the Hollywood United Neighborhood Council, and I just wanted to first thank you for reallocating $500,000 to the Office of Climate Emergency Mobilization, and requested you please restore the $500,000 for the Climate Emergency Mission. This is important for both equity and environmental concerns. We're at a critical transition right now, and we need to emerge with climate change and equity at the top of our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Adam Smith, and I'd like to speak on One and Two.
Go right ahead, sir.
Hey, Mr. Krikorian, my name's Adam. And I'm not calling today to be some kind of drag, but two weeks ago, talking about the People's Budget. You said City Council isn't gonna govern by hashtag, but maybe you should, and I'll tell you why. Because your LAPD made a list of hashtags of people that didn't have to die, like Eric Rivera, Kenny Watkins, and Brandon Glenn. Chris Chappell, Matt, and Joaquin Wilson Paul, do you remember them? Maybe you should, because I know their moms do. Jesse Romero was only 14, Paul, he didn't even make it to high school, so governed by hashtag. It's the least you can do. Governed by hashtag. Least you can do. I agree with everything that Quan said. Peace!
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
It's Eric Preven, I'd like to speak on all items.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. For starters, I've had a very hard time getting through, as you know, so on a quiet day, when you faked everybody else out, it's nice to be invited in. The Department of Aging is the department where a lot of real estate puts up older folks that's rented to us from Jamison. When I looked at the way that money was being paid, I was aghast, like, oh my God, major fraud, I brought it to Ron Galperin's attention, wild fluctuations, and he just winced, like, I know, we don't really look at that stuff. Then I'll move on to the Department of Animal Services. I just want to say very clearly, we should not be allowing animals to die during Los Angeles because of 501, because of the COVID-19. We should be doing whatever we can, there are a lot of profiteers in this space, to bolster the support of animals. Department of Cannabis Regulation, this is one of the best reasons not to elect Herb Wesson for anything ever again, it has been so botched, and it's a sad state of affairs where, you know, a kind of a new drug war is being started. In terms of Information Technology Agency, obviously, this is a group that has disproportionate influence because of all the upgrades that are obviously necessary. Ted Ross seems like a lovely guy, but he actually runs an incredibly toxic boat that is, you know, more or less set on a course of First Amendment violation. He's installed, under the desk where Nury Martinez is sitting in for Herb Wesson, a virtual synthesizer of ways to dismiss the public and shift the microphones. You can see great footage of Mitchell Englander, the sociopath, operating it like a maestro. The Board of Public Works is the five commission that are paid, that, you know, is another venue for incredible deals at the expense of the public, all done with a kind of a weird arms-length with Councilmembers themselves and the various picadillos. It's very, very awkward. And Building and Safety, finally, this is the place where Ray Chan has done so much damage, where, you know, Corret will remember we were pointing out.
Thanks very much, Mr. Preven. Your time has expired.
You know, I'd like more time.
Well, I'm sorry, your time's expired. Next speaker, please.
Oh!
Thank you for calling. Please state your name and item you'd like to speak on.
All items. Every fucking item, please, sir. Thank you. Yes. So let's talk about the Department of Animal Services. Kill all the dogs and all the cats in those fucking shelters. Do them a favor. Emancipate them from their hell. There's no difference on June 19th, on his Juneteenth, between cats and dogs in your shelters, and nuggets in chains over in those plantations. It's the same thing. So the cats and dogs will be waiting for their euthanasia. Now, when we get to the Department of Aging. Old people, they don't work and pay taxes. I agree with what Mr. Corret said. Anyone over the age of 70 should do the right thing and ask for assisted suicide. Yes, I agree with that. Good job. And of course, we would like to thank also Public Works, the great job of Bob Lemonfield cleaning up Tarzana, and Mr. Corret, thank you for removing the mattress today on Havenhurst.
Really?
Yes, they did. They're very good Jewish gentlemen.
Oh, please continue.
Yes. Now let's talk about the toxicity. The sneaky Armenian that takes and schedules special meetings, and hides, as the pretty lady said earlier, I didn't know there was a meeting today. Well, I knew there was a meeting, and the reason why.
Speak to the agenda, Mr. Lower Yor, sacrifice your time. Speak to the agenda.
Oh, that's, yeah. Mr. Goat, please, and listen to the chairman. Okay. Yes, so, I'm sorry, I digress. So getting back to social justice and the climate fund, we want to defund it. Right now, I'm outside.
Thank you very much, your time has expired. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello? Go right ahead, Speaker. Hello? All right, I'm so sorry, we're going to have to move to, next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Um, hi, my name is Nancy Matson. I'd like to speak on Item Two. Um, I'm just calling. I'm sorry?
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to request that you restore the $200,000 for the Climate Emergency Commission. Um, it's, it would be a very important element in supporting and helping to carry out the LA's Green New Deal, which I know has already been supported by all the Councilmembers, and it's really important to have some kind of funding in place at the city level to make sure that this happens, and it's a very insignificant part of the budget, and it's, you know, it's obviously like an incredibly important topic that has been somewhat eclipsed by COVID and other, you know, Black Lives Matter-related issues, but, you know, it's still going to affect all those people, and it's a, and it also represents a lot of frontline communities of color, and, um, and that's all. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello? Go ahead, Speaker. Hello? Okay, I'm sorry, we'll have to move to the next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Gina Viola, and I'd like to speak on Items One and Two, please.
Very good. Go right ahead, please.
As a resident of the city of Los Angeles, I'm urging this committee, and the mayor, and the city council, to ensure the full funding for the 2021 budget for the Climate Emergency Office, the Climate Emergency Commission, and community assemblies in the 20 and 21 budget. The city considers what a truly just economic recovery from COVID looks like, and how to uproot deep-seated structural racism, all while meeting the urgency of the climate crisis. These initiatives are more important than ever to ensure working-class communities of color have a central role, and that justice and sustainability are core principles. We also urge this committee to embrace the call from Black Lives Matter and the People's Budget LA to defund the LAPD, and reimagine community safety while rejecting scare tactics from those who are protected by the current policing systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Go right ahead, Speaker. Hello? You are on. Okay, I'm sorry, we'll need to go to the next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Philip Gonchev, from West LA. Um, I'd like to speak on One and Two.
Go right ahead.
For One, I'd like to really, uh, ask you to, to consider drastically reducing the budget for policing and the adopting the People's Budget. Uh, it's been developed with a lot of community input, and as you've heard already on previous hearings, there's a lot of community support for it. We have to start moving away from the use of force in LA, and that starts with reducing policing, and since there's already a huge deficit in the budget, we should, we can use that money much better in other ways. Uh, so one of those ways is making sure that climate action is funded adequately, and that the Climate Emergency Mobilization, um, uh, sorry, Commission was meant to ensure that the, the Office stays on track, and the whole program was supposed to be inclusive of the voices of frontline communities, so please also restore the funding for the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Lara Mureza, and I'd like to speak on Items Number Two and Three.
Go right ahead. Thank you.
Hi, on behalf of Scope, which is a South Los Angeles community-based organization, I'm urging the Budget and Finance Committee to ensure full funding of $800,000 for, in the 2020, 2021 budget, for the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office, the Climate Emergency Commission, and the community assemblies. We strongly feel like this is a critical investment towards a just recovery and a just transition towards a clean and regenerative economy, and feel that in this moment where there are calls to defund the police and redefine community safety, that public health is essential to reimagining this future of a safe and healthy community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
And please turn down your device, because we're getting feedback from it. So anybody wishing to speak really needs to turn down the device first, please. So go right ahead.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly.
Oh, good. Hi, I'm Jan Bunker, and thank you for taking my call. I'm a volunteer at LA Harbor Shelter, Animal Shelter, and I'm asking that the Department of Animal Services please be given at least the budget that we had last year. We need many more animal care technicians, there's just a critical need for animal services. The shelters are barely able to meet the needs of the animals as it is, and I'd also like to advocate for no cuts to the Spainuter program, and for it to retain its funding, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Go right ahead, speaker. Go right ahead, speaker. All right, I'm afraid we'll need to go to the next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I guess Eric Roman on items, uh, one and two, um, pardon me, two and three. Um, I am with Physicians for Social Responsibility in the LEAP L.A. Coalition. Um, we have a unique... Unique opportunity to advance a transformative agenda to address the climate crisis, uh, recover from COVID-nineteen and systemic anti-black racism, um, including environmental racism, and that's, uh, through full funding for the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office and a permanent Climate Emergency Commission with strong representation from indigenous and frontline communities that can play a critical role in shaping a just recovery and a just transition. Uh, we strongly support the People's Budget and the call to reimagine community safety and resilience by defunding LAPD, uh, shifting budget priorities, and ensuring full funding, again, of eight hundred thousand dollars for both the office and the commission and community assemblies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Joseph O'Conne, uh, items two and three.
Go right ahead.
I just would like to echo, uh, the comments made by other speakers to fully fund these climate change emergency projects. Uh, as has been stated, the money being given for these projects is so small in comparison to what is given to the LAPD. In fact, last week at a budget meeting, two hundred thousand dollars, uh, was proposed to be given to the Community Safety Partnership, which, without going into too much detail, has been, uh, named by Stop LAPD Spying and BLMLA. As racial profiling with a PR twist, uh, if you really wanted to invest in community safety, you could take that money and use it to fund the commission that has been called for by so many speakers. Um, as we know, L.A.'s... Uh, L.A. has been plagued by environmental racism, and it's important when we're directing money toward these climate change initiatives to center the voices of marginalized communities to help shape, uh, a truly just recovery and a future that, uh, actually protects everyone. So, in closing, support the People's Budget, defund LAPD, and use that money for important things.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Nicole Levin, and I'm speaking on item two.
Okay, go right ahead.
All right, yeah, um, yeah, I'm with Sunrise Movement Los Angeles. I'm also calling in support of the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office, full budget. Honestly, I feel like we should have had an entire department. Um, this budget, like, this office is already so little, and we need so much more to combat the ongoing climate crisis that we are seeing already affect communities of color. I was on the call Monday, um, when the People's Bu... Budget, Los Angeles presented their beautiful and inspiring and historic budget. That was a budget of the people that had input from hundreds of thou... Like, thousands of Angelenos, and that was huge. Um, these calls are so hard to call into, even though the dial-in process is, like, so confusing and undemocratic. Um, I... I urge you to listen to the voices of people and defund the police and invest in communities of color. Invest in programs like the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office that empower communities and community-led approaches to tackle, um, these insane crises, um, that are already upon us, um, yet. So, thank you so much. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, speaker, are you there?
Hello?
Yes, you're... You're on. You... You probably need to turn your device down so you don't get the lag. Go right ahead, speaker, you're on.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to comment on the, uh, litigation that was settled at item twenty-two yesterday, the Chad Lewis settlement.
You'll... You'll need to speak to the agenda, um... So, if you could speak to one of the agenda items on today's agenda, then... That's all we're taking, right?
Right. There's a lot of, um, discrimination, retaliation, and violation of federal employment and housing practices, and I wanted to bring that, uh, forward, you know, because this is the budget period, and we've had many, many budget hearings that have been canceled. So, it's important to be able to, uh, get this information out, and I was completely blocked from the last meeting.
So, Mr. Levin, you've already spoken, and it's really irresponsible to try to jump the line on other people who haven't spoken.
I didn't jump the line. I didn't even... I didn't even request the call.
You're under oath.
You started talking to me.
Yeah, you're done.
You started talking to me.
You're done.
Yeah, I'm listening.
You're done. Let's hear the next speaker, please.
You're done, sir.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Go right ahead, speaker. Speaker, go right ahead. All right, we'll need to go to the next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Janie Williams, and I'd like to speak on item number two.
Very good. Go right ahead, please.
Okay. Hi, um, I would really like to ask that, um, guys reallocate the funding for the Climate Emergency Commission. Um, I'm very happy that the... The money has been reallocated for the Climate Emergency Mobilization, but the Climate Emergency Commission is also vitally important at this time. Um, it is an integral part...
Hello?
My name is Janie Williams, and I'd like to speak on item number two.
Okay. You need to turn your... You'll need to turn down the volume on your device so that we don't have a delay. Ms. Williams, are you still on the line?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm trying... It's very confusing.
It's okay.
Um, yes, I'm still on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, but turn... Please turn down the volume on your device because you're hearing me on a delay.
Okay. Oh, my gosh. Okay. I don't know if...
You know what? You're fine.
Yeah.
Just go ahead and keep going.
Okay. So, the Climate Emergency Commission is really important, and I hope you guys can reallocate the money there. Um, it... It is gonna represent the communities classified as most impacted by environmental justice, by the Cal EnviroScreen, um, and I think at this juncture, it's really important that those voices, uh, not be taken away. So, uh, please do reallocate the funding to the Climate Emergency Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is, uh, Sam Sacks. I'm from Paul Keretz's district. I'd like to speak on agenda item number two.
Go right ahead, sir.
I'd just like to say we need to, uh, fully fund this item and many more like it. This is just the start. If you're curious where funding can come from, it can come from the bloated LAPD budget, uh, support your citizens and those people actively organizing on the ground, and defund the LAPD, uh, in support of People's Budget Los Angeles.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Chair, the queue is clear.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you to all who called in. Uh, that will take us then to our, um, first department, so I'd like to, uh, invite Ms. Trejo up, and we will take up the Department of A.G. Is Ms. Trejo on the line? Or somebody from A.G.?
Hello, this is, uh, James Dunn, Assistant General Manager. Um, Laura is on the line, but unfortunately, she's having connection problems, uh, so I'll... I'll just speak with her, uh, for her in... Until she could either connect, uh, herself.
Okay.
Um, basically, uh, we... We appreciate that the mayor's budget maintained funding for all of our existing, um, programs, especially the programs for our nutrition and our wellness-based, uh, programs, uh, as well a... As, um, our, uh, homeless, uh, senior job training program. Um, I do want to say that during the... This, uh, period where the department has been dealing with the COVID response, um, we basically, uh, shifted our operations in senior nutrition from, uh, half of it being, uh, dining centers to all delivery. Uh, we've also shifted to seven-day, uh, coverage, uh, of meals instead of just five days. Um, thankfully, we're getting additional state and federal dollars during this time to cover those costs. Now, going into the new fiscal year, seniors are going to be the, uh, one of the last vulnerable populations to be able to safely leave their homes, so we don't really see the immediate, uh, decrease in the service demands. Currently, we're serving over twenty thousand seniors, uh, across all our various, uh, nutrition program resources, and what we would like to ask, uh, from the council is that we, uh, would like to have authority to unfreeze, uh, our existing vacancies, especially for those positions that are grant-funded, uh, the department is primarily roughly about eighty percent grant-funded, um, so that we could address the continuing, uh, demand for services, and that, uh, we also have, uh, authority to fill our two vacant accounting, uh, accountant positions. Uh, we have four accountants currently. Two of those four positions are vacant, so we're kinda struggling to, uh, be able to pay our contractors in... On a timely basis, um, and those are big asks. We... We will stay within the budget, uh, cuts for the furloughs, especially the portion with, uh, that's general funded, which is about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, but there's another, uh, three hundred thousand that's actually grant-funded, uh, three hundred and nineteen thousand, and those funds would basically revert back to the state, so if we could get authorization to, uh, unfreeze some of our positions, we can utilize some of that, uh, grant funding and still stay within the proposed budget.
Very good. Uh, well, thank you very much, Mr. Dunn and Ms. Trejo. I... I think who is... I hope can at least hear me. Um, I wanna thank you both, first of all, because, um, Department of A.G. always does such incredible work for the senior population of Los Angeles, but now, more than ever during this COVID crisis, you've had to improvise and adapt and overcome in, uh, almost unimaginable ways, and, um, so I really wanna thank you very much for your leadership, and I... I think we should certainly get a report back from the C.L.A., uh, on the requests you've just made, uh, to guarantee you the... The maximum flexibility in managing the department, so I'd... I'd like to ask for those reports back. Remember, any questions for A.G.? Mr. Keretz? Followed by Mr. Price and Mr. Blumenfield. Mr. Keretz, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to thank the department for all the help and coordination that you've provided for the senior meals program during the coronavirus emergency, and it's been a lifesaver for many, and it's greatly appreciated. Um, my question is, uh, with the LGBTQ multipurpose center program, um, it's an important program, and I hope the circumstances will allow it to be refunded as soon as possible. I wanted to ask, is there a specific facility that would go unused or underutilized if the program remains unfunded?
Actually, uh, it is being funded for the new fiscal year. Uh, what had happened was due to some delays in the... The approval of the RFP selection, uh, we basically, uh, met with the C.A.O. and the council office, and, uh, the money is being allocated towards funding the program for the new fiscal year. So, uh, we're covered on that, uh, but going into the following year's budget, uh, it would be important that we secure a, uh, long-term source of funding for that, uh, program.
Great. Thank you.
And just... Just to note, Mr. Keretz, that we were able to address that with a non-general fund, uh, source of funding, so for at least... At least this year, it's taken care of. Um, Mr. Price?
I do want to, uh, thank the department for their extraordinary work, uh, during this... During this very challenging time, especially working with one of our more vulnerable pop... Populations, and that certainly is accurate, uh, for seniors in my district. Um, you... You talked a little bit about the senior meal program. I think that's been a senior success for the department and for the council offices that have sought to supplement that. Uh, do you see a, uh... Is there a desire to increase that? Are you seeking any increase, uh, in... In that program or just being able to fulfill the... The existing program, uh, for the next several months? Kinda how do you see... How do you see that the senior meal program playing into, uh... Into departments of operations?
Uh, just to give a broad, uh, overview, we basically went from serving about six thousand seniors per day, Monday through Friday, to now we're serving twenty thousand seniors with meals for at least, uh, two, uh, meals per day, uh, depending on the program. Uh, FEMA has extended the Great Plates Program, uh, from June tenth to July by another thirty days. We don't know if there'll be a further extension. Uh, we're using a combination of our, uh, regular older American Act nutrition funds as well as the Family First, uh, COVID Emergency Response Funds, and soon, uh, the CARE Act Funds, which would be addition beginning July one through December of this year. Uh, we will have to take a... A look at what our service levels and how much we can maintain, uh, and report back to the council, uh, as to what the funding situation and the service demand levels are. Uh, what I believe the... The COVID, uh, pandemic has shown is that there were already a lot of seniors who were right there on the border, um, you know, between being able to take care of their nutritional needs and other costs, and this basically forced a lot of seniors in a situation where the city had to step up and help. So, w... We're looking at this. We know that, uh, some of these twenty thousand seniors, once everything opens up again, they'll be able to go back to... To their lives and be able to manage their situation, but there are also a lot of seniors who never accessed our services before, who will need to have nutrition services continue, as well as our... Our staff help them, uh, to find other resources that they may need, that's not just nutrition, uh, but other things related to housing and health.
Anything else, Mr. Price?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Blumenfield? You're on mute, Mr. Blumenfield. You missed it. It was very poetic what I said. I'm sure it was. In fact, I'm... I'm sure it was so poetic, we'd all love to hear it again. Go...
Yeah. So I'm just going to go right into thanking the department. You guys have been on the front lines responding to the COVID crisis, as was mentioned, and the folks that you serve are often the most vulnerable, and the safer at home orders for them are so important. So going from six dozen to 20,000 is incredible, especially for a very small department like yours. Curious, a lot of the seniors who, I assume, most of them that you're serving, the new clientele, are because the safer at home order is basically prevented, their normal means of getting meals has shut those normal means off? Or is it also because they've lost income? Because obviously, seniors who want a fixed income don't have the same problems as folks who are employed necessarily. And so I've heard some people say, well, seniors aren't as affected in terms of the loft of income. So what are you finding it is the main reason that seniors are in extra need at this time?
That's exactly our concern. There's definitely a portion of these new seniors that we're serving are basically because they have to stay at home. But there's also those seniors who are low-income. As a matter of fact, probably the number of them when they signed up to our various programs were low-income seniors. And those would be the ones that are impacted, not just because they're staying at home, but their income is being impacted. For those who were still working, you know, they would be without that source of income. And even before the COVID crisis hit, when we look at the percentage of homeless population that were seniors, and also based on the stories that, you know, we heard interacting with some of our new clients, is that a lot of seniors who were right there living from paycheck to paycheck were getting hit by a bad economy. And so with the impact on the economy with the COVID, that just really creates a really bad situation for those seniors.
Yeah. And then you add on to that, that, you know, we have a very disturbing rise in senior homelessness that was noted in this last homeless count. So what you're doing is so important. And as you mentioned, some of the proposed furlough cuts seem to be counterproductive if they literally would prevent you from getting funded by the state. So I'm very, I'm glad that we're asking for a report back on that, because it's crazy to me to cut funding when we're getting that funding from other sources. And speaking of the other sources, the state budget has made cuts in Aging recently. Has that affected you as well?
It appears that there was a, about a $500,000 reduction to our proposed 2021 budget from the California Department of Aging. What we're doing is we're using our CARE Act Funds to cover that, to maintain our funding levels with last year. And then also with the Family First Funds, because of the lateness in which it became available to us, we know that some of those funds are going to be available in the 2021 fiscal year as well. So I think in the combination of those, as I mentioned before, we'll look to see how much of those additional demands that we can cover, and how much of those senior, 20,000 seniors that we're currently serving, how many of them will continue requiring our support.
Explain how the CARE Act Funds work, because I thought those funds hadn't been appropriated yet, and that we were just kind of racking up potential reimbursables that had to go to the COVID Committee and go through a process. So are you actually able to spend CARES dollars now?
I'm sorry. This appears to be somewhat a separate process. These CARES Funds are going through the California Department of Aging, and they gave us a preliminary funding amount. Unfortunately, I just don't recall that amount off the top of my head.
The amount of, I just didn't understand the process. So it's not coming out of the, up to $700 million of City CARES Act money? Although indeed, I think that there are some very good expenditures that happen in Department of Aging through those CARES dollars. But I just didn't understand process-wise. So this is coming from the state CARES Act dollars that are coming to you, correct?
Right. Specifically to support our Older American Act nutrition programs.
And then, and you probably heard me ask every other department this, but in terms of FEMA eligibility, there's probably a fair number of your costs could be FEMA-eligible. Have you guys been scrubbing those potentials to make sure that we don't lose out a dime on those?
Yes. We've been reporting our FEMA-related salary costs to the CIO on a regular basis. But actually, you know, listening into the comments made by yourself and the other council members, I started wondering if there was more expenses that we can research as to whether or not they would qualify for FEMA reimbursement. So we'll be taking a closer look at our past operational costs, and we'll consult with the CIO if we see anything that potentially can be reclaimed.
No, thank you. And I urge you, and I'm a broken record, but I'm urging every department to do that, because that's the only money of, that, you know, can be increased without actually decreasing something else. There's no zero-sum game on that money at the moment. So most of you is, the department is grant-funded. So do the furloughs save any money in the general fund, or how does that work?
Right. Of our 434,000 furlough cut, 115,000 of that is general fund. The other 319,000 are grant. That basically, if they are not used, they would just be returned to our grant or as unspent grant funds. But it will impact our services in the sense that it delays our response times. And also, in combination with the hiring freeze, that actually reduces our efficiency. So for, as an example, one of our recent vacancy is a senior management analyst who is actually responsible for directly managing our nutrition call center when we're handling all this. And at one point, it actually peaked at about six, I think it was 6,000 calls in one day. And we've basically been borrowing people from the DSW program. So he was actually managing his own regular staff, about eight, nine people, plus additional 180 DSWs in order to deal with that volume of calls. Now, last month, he transferred out of our department, and we haven't yet gotten the authorization to unfreeze that position so that we can fill it. It's a position that's vitally needed. It's fully grant-funded, and it's a direct-service position.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize to the department and to my colleagues. I had to step away for just a couple minutes, so I may have missed something. I just wanted to, and if I'm repetitive, please stop me and my staff can fill me in. I'll go down with the department a bit on the impacts of the furloughs and the hiring freeze. I read your memo, and I saw that it's going to be the equivalent of 208 lost work hours per employee. And that's the impact of, did I get this right? Forty-seven full-time employees?
Actually, we have 51 authorized full-time positions, 46 regular, six resos, and one reso that's off-budget.
Okay. All right. And the memo talked about those cuts causing a delay in direct services, because during the course of the year, 7,800 callbacks would be delayed. Is that number right?
Yeah. At the time that the memo was prepared, we were just starting to face this oncoming flood of calls for nutrition and other resources. And we were very concerned about if there's a second wave during the flu season this winter that will also experience another high demand for services, and will need everybody, you know, all hands on deck in order to cover the calls. During this recent couple of months, we've basically been pulling everybody from our various divisions to help out in directly either answering calls or actually delivering meals. We've had some of our contract administrators, when they get a call from one of our senior centers saying they're short drivers for that day or for the next couple of days, we basically gather them all up, and they go out there and they're just serving meals like everybody else.
And you said that this was sort of prepared when a lot was uncertain. I don't know that anything more is certain. The numbers and the projections about impacts and cuts, the same now as they were when the memo was prepared?
I think conservatively, yes. I think it's about the same. And just as additional information, under our, the Great Plates Program, once we hit the 20,000 capacity across all our nutrition programs, but we already have an additional waiting list of 2,100 seniors for meals.
A wait, 2,100 seniors? Okay.
Yes. So this projection, I think, is still conservative for the next fiscal year.
So you're saying you could wind up with larger numbers of people on a waiting list?
Yeah. Especially if there's a second wave later this year.
Okay. A lot of the work that Aging does is not direct, but it's the management of contracts or working with nonprofit agencies or vendors for stuff. What is the impact of these cuts on your ability to, A, administer the contracts, and B, make payments to vendors in a timely fashion? Because I know we're going to be hearing from vendors who are themselves struggling, whether it's a restaurant or a group like Jewish Family Services, you know, they often make their own payroll. And I'm curious what impact you're projecting there?
Well, essentially, it would be an increase in the length of time it takes us to process those payments. So our payment process basically starts off with our contract administrators reviewing the invoices versus the budget and what they know as to what's going on out in the field. And then our accounting section processes those approved invoices and enters them into the city controllers. They're very, both groups are very responsive to the demands of our contractors, especially if there are special case situations. I think as a department, we have a very good track record compared to other governmental organizations for processing our invoices quite quickly. We've gotten feedback from at least three of our contractors who have contracts with either the county or with the state, where they comment that we are one of the quicker ones to be able to pay them. But it does, having these furloughs and the hiring freeze, especially since two of our four accounting musicians are vacant, seriously delays our ability to pay. We're already working all of our accountants overtime in order to make up for the vacancies, but we also have these additional 27 new contracts for the Great Plates Program, which is actually more than our existing contracts. So, yes, going into the new fiscal year, it's going to be a very tough challenge to pay our contractors in a timely fashion.
You said two, which is very disturbing. You said two of four of the accountants, the administrators are vacant. Of the remaining two, are either of them close to retirement?
Not that I'm aware of. As a matter of fact, of the two vacancies, one was from a retirement, and the other was from a transfer back in March. We had put in the request to backfill. Unfortunately, the hard hiring freeze hit just at that time. We've just recently got authority to fill one accounting position, but only as a transfer or a promotion. So I think that's going to be a very difficult task to find somebody who would want to transfer in an era where we're doing furloughs?
Yes. I imagine. Part of the reason I asked the specifics about whether either of the accountants were close to retirement is I was leading to the broader question. I'm concerned with the hiring freeze, with the impact will be of retirements on any department. So I'm asking a lot of them, and I'm asking you now. Do you have any sense of what percentage of your workforce is eligible for retirement? Or getting close to it?
Oh, I, you know, we had been looking at that, and I don't recall the figure off the top of my head, but I do know that the majority of our department staff who are eligible for retirement, a lot of them are in key positions within the department, critical positions, where their years of experience and their skills and knowledge would really be a severe impact to our operations if any of them were actually to retire within the next year. Part of our...
I wish that what you just said was a statement unique to your department, but unfortunately, I'm hearing that from a lot of departments. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, members. Thank you, Mr. Dunn and Ms. Trejo, if you're still on the line. Thank you very much. That will bring us next to Animal Services. And I'd like to invite Ms. Barnett to come on board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is Tammy Watson, the Assistant General Manager for Department of Animal Services.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I also have Catherine Chico, our Budget Director, on the line with us. And the Department of Animal Services, we understand the financial crisis that the city is facing, and we want to do our share in the sacrifice. And we appreciate the budget that we have received. However, we do have two concerns that we may face in this budget year. And the one concern that many departments, I'm sure, are facing would be if we incur the 26 furlough days. With a small department like ours, we've calculated that to total 37 full-time equivalent employees. And for a department that's 20, has a 24-hour operation, we're just concerned how we will continue to operate if we incur those furloughs. The other area of concern is the funding of the St. and Neuter Program. That's a program that's critical to the communities that we serve, and if it's underfunded, we'll have to reduce some of our programs. And other than those two items, we're pleased with our budget, and we thank you for that budget, and we're working on those challenges that we may face with these two items.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And if you have questions for us, we're open.
Yes. And members, any questions for Animal Services? Mr. Bumlinfield?
Great, thank you. And I think we should certainly ask for a report back on the Animal Sterilization Fund and what that, you know, what the cost of that. I worry very much if that goes down, that would end up costing us quite a bit in the future and moving forward. In fact, Watson, do you have any comments on that in terms of the cost of that cut, in terms of what it means?
What I'd like to do is ask Catherine Chico to respond to that. She has the numbers with her. Catherine, can you...
Catherine Chico with the Department of Animal
Yes. Catherine Chico with the Department of Animal Services. Um, I first want to start off by saying, um, that the spay and neuter surgeries associated with the adoption of our animals will not be impacted by the underfunding of the animal sterilization fund. However, our mobile free and discount programs will be impacted up to approximately seventy percent from, um, prior year's funding, which would total, um, approximately sixteen thousand surgeries in fiscal year 2021. And keep in mind that our, our mobile, um, spay and neuter, um, contracts are low-income residents by providing the free, um, spay and neuter surgeries that are, um, critical to, um, our residents.
Yeah. Well, and, and, and that will cost us, I mean, does, how many animals will not get spayed and neutered because of that?
Um, we're, we're projecting about sixteen thousand. Um, between the mobile, the discount and the frees, if we had not had any cuts, we were projecting over twenty-two thousand surgeries amongst those three programs. But with the current funding level that we are at right now, we are only going to be able to provide approximately, um, um, twelve thousand or so surgeries. So, it, it, it's going to be a, a big cut.
So, as part of our report back, I hope we can, we can look at what the alternatives are, uh, for that. Now, I wanted to ask you about the, um, the West Valley Animal Shelter. You know, they do critical work. We don't have, um, any other shelters in the, in the West Valley. Uh, it's been closed since the beginning of the pandemic. What, when can we see that open? What's the plan for, for that?
That's a really good question. And, um, to be honest with you, we don't know the answer as to when we can reopen West Valley. Um, one of the things, we're trying to make sure that we keep our employees safe by working the, um, twelve-hour shift. And we're kind of monitoring the, the mayor and the Public Health Department on the cases to see if they're increasing, um, and see when we can move back to our regular, uh, schedules. The other factor is if we incur the furloughs, will we still have enough employees to fully staff, um, that shelter? So, we don't have a date. We are working towards reopening the two temporarily closed shelters. And it's part of our reconstitution plan. And, um, we're, we're not complete with our plan, but we're looking probably in phase two or three that we'll be able to, um, begin to reopen the two shelters that were temporarily closed.
Great. Well, I certainly want to see those open as soon as possible. Um, are you looking at, um, like temporary alternatives, like in some other shelters where you have, you know, partnerships with best friends or, or groups like that? Are there, are there other cost-effective alternatives that can keep it open at least temporarily until you're ready?
Well, uh, we, we are partnering with best friends and, and our other rescue partners and they're helping us a great deal, uh, in reducing our population. Right now, um, we've reduced our population in the shelter by fifty-nine percent and we, we have based in the remaining shelters. Um, so we are not looking to work with a partner at this time to open the West Valley facility.
Okay. Well, i- if this has, if this goes on too much longer, we may want to look at, at those kinds of things. And, and the, actually, the adoption rate has gone, uh, up. Is that right? I mean, during, I guess a lot of people are, are, are looking for animal companions during this difficult time of isolation. Is that, is that right?
That is true. We've received an overwhelming response from the, uh, public and our rescue partners. Um, when we first were faced with the COVID pandemic, um, we made an outreach and we had so many people assist us with fostering. As a matter of fact, we still have, uh, over a hundred, um, and forty-four animals in private foster homes now. And, um, as I mentioned before, the number of animals in our shelters is greatly reduced. So, people are looking for companions to work with them from home, to stay safer at home.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonenfield. And, um, members, uh, Mr. Kratz, you'll be next, but before, uh, we go to Mr. Kratz, just, uh, keep in mind that because of our sort of truncated, uh, and more challenging budget review process, uh, that we're going through, uh, we won't have the liberty of going through a comprehensive list of report backs, uh, as we have in prior years. So, if members want to request a particular outcome or something should be funded or, or not funded, it, now would be the time to just, or go ahead and, uh, raise that issue. And then we'll expect that the CLA will include those, uh, requests as options in the final report back. So, we'll have, you know, the, the one comprehensive report back that will include, um, you know, what our requests are and those will be subject to deeper consideration on the twenty-ninth. But I, I don't think we will be able to, the, the CLA is just not going to have the bandwidth to do a lot of budget analysis of specific requests between now and, and then. So, um, just wanted to, uh, it, it's a little different process than what we would normally go through. So, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Kratz.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, why did the department shut down two shelters in the first place? And one of the concerns that the public has often expressed is that it's led to additional euthanasias. Uh, so if you could answer both of those questions, has it? And why did we shut it down in the first place?
Um, the answer to the increased euthanasias, that is incorrect. No, it has not led to that. Uh, as a matter of fact, it's, it's been fewer. And the reason the department closed, temporarily closed those two shelters is, is was out of an abundance of concern for employees. Um, we decided to, after working with the mayor's office, we went on a twelve-hour shift for employees. And so, we have three teams, an A, B, and C team. And as a protection for employees, if someone tested positive and there was an exposure in the shelter, then we will be able to rotate another team in to care for the needs of the animals and the services to the public. And that was our primary reason, so that we can, um, keep our employees safe. And the reason we, West Valley was selected is really the proximity of West Valley to the other facilities. For example, it's about twenty minutes from the Mission Hill Shelter and about, um, twenty minutes in a slightly different direction from the East Valley Shelter, so that we can still offer services for the members of the West Valley community. And as for the North Central Shelter, that shelter is currently under construction and the construction crews were working, um, on completing the project. And we're working out of trailers. And so, we thought that it'll be beneficial if we're able to move off the premises and allow them to complete that project, which they're almost complete. Um, and we're hoping to have a grand reopening sometime in August for the North Central Shelter.
Thank you. And, uh, a number of folks have said that it's impacted the department's avail- availability to, uh, go out and deal with stray animals, um, and to, uh, respond to service calls. Uh, how factual is that? Do we still go out on all the same stray animal calls and, uh, and other service calls?
As, as with most departments or all departments, I'm sure with, um, the pandemic, we've kind of adjusted some of our operations. And our field officers are out in the field and they're handling emergency calls. Um, as for our stray calls, we're working on a, what we consider should be the best practice in the industry right now. And that is when we receive a call from the public, we go through a series of questions with them to see if they're able to assist us by either, um, fostering the animal or taking the animal around their neighborhood. Because what we found in, um, our national conferences that we have, because we, we do a two to three per week national, um, conference calls with other agencies. And we found that animals who are left in their community, they're normally found by their owner within twenty-four hours. So, we, we try to get the members of the public to assist us in that way, by either taking the dog for a walk around the block and trying to find the owner, or keeping it within that community. If the person finds the stray is unable to do so, then we do bring them into the shelter.
Okay. And, uh, on spay and neuter, what do we typically spend in a year, on, on, in a normal year on spay and neuter?
In a normal year, um, the last complete year, fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, we spent three point three million dollars. And we were projecting to spend three point six million in the current fiscal year, but due to the crisis, um, our costs went down to three million.
So, what, what is the, uh, impact of, of, uh, only allocating four hundred thousand? Um, how does, how do we get from four hundred thousand to three million?
Um, that will result in approximately sixteen thousand surgeries that, um, we cannot provide to the public.
But where, where'd the overall three million come from?
Oh, the, the three mil-
We're only, we're only budgeting four hundred thousand.
Oh, yes. The three million comes from adoption fees, donation, license, and licensing fees.
And those all go into spay and neuter as well?
Yes.
So, there's still a significant amount in spay and neuter, but sixteen thousand surgeries wouldn't be done. Um, obviously, uh, that, that, uh, has an exponential effect because, uh, animals that are not spayed and neutered keep breeding and potentially, uh, result in a greater need for animal services, uh, and, and continue to head in the wrong direction. Um, what would it, what would be budgeted, um, in the mayor's budget to get us up to our usual level of spay and neuter?
We would need an additional, um, we would need an additional one point four million at this point if, if our projections, um, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, came to fruition. Um, keep in mind that, um, a lot of our spay and neuter partners, our, our, um, contractors and our letter of agreement contractors, they had, um, a lot of them had stopped doing spay and neuter surgeries, um, with the safer at home order. But the ones that have reopened, um, they've notified us that they are booked through July. Because now that, you know, people, that now that some of the orders or the phases are starting to open back up again, that they are being, um, you know, the demand for the spay and neuter surgeries has just skyrocketed.
Well, I'm not sure that, uh, I can anticipate us, uh, adding the full amount to our budget, but I would like to ask us to consider five hundred thousand dollars, uh, be added back towards, uh, spay and neuter.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Kratz?
That's it.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Bonen? Mr. Price?
Uh, just one quick question. Um, uh, do you have, uh, a, any sense offhand at Oakwood Park? How many calls you get a year about, uh, off-leash dogs in our parks?
No, we don't have that, um, information. However, um, we, we just, we're in the process of installing a new telephone system for all of our shelters. And with the new system, we plan to be able to identify the different types of calls we receive. So, um, we hope to have something like that in the near future.
Uh, and when, when you get a call like that, given the resources you have, how, how likely or how quickly are you able to respond?
Um, it depends, to be honest with you. It depends because, um, are we talking COVID pandemic or pre-COVID? Because, uh, we're, we're handling the emergency calls and, um, because we're on the three shifts, um, we have fewer staff, so it may take a, a little longer than during normal operations to respond.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, it's, it's no fault of your, I mean, it's, it's, it's a very long time if a response is able to, to, to come at all, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. I, I, I point that out, colleagues, just to, to underscore sort of a dynamic in our conversations about lease budgeting, is what happens, and this is happening right now, uh, today, probably, at Oakwood Park in Venice, is that there are people who are calling about, uh, you know, scores or dozens of off-leash dogs in the park and Animal Services is under resource to respond to it. So, you know who they're calling? Calling LAPD. Uh, LAPD has been tons of calls. And there's no universe in which having a uniformed officer, uh, uh, from LAPD, uh, with, with, with a gun going out and responding to, uh, an issue of, of people with off-leash dogs. And sort of a dynamic that keeps getting, keeps getting, so, um, uh, just thought it was, this was a good example to point out that dynamic. It's one I'm dealing with every day at, at, at a park, uh, in my district right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Price, anything for Animal Services?
Nothing, nothing this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Um, appreciate your, the great work that you're doing under very difficult circumstances right now. Um, and that will bring us next to cannabis regulation. Is Ms. Packer on the line? Do we have Ms. Packer? Or?
Good afternoon. This is Cat Packer. Can folks hear me?
Hi. Hi. Yes, we can. How are you? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm, I'm doing well. And I also have my Assistant General Manager, Jason Colleen, uh, who is on the line. Uh, Jason, can you confirm?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Thank you.
Very good. Well, uh, why don't you go ahead and, uh, just open up with, uh, whatever brief comment you'd like to make and then we'll go straight into questions.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'll pass things directly over to Jason. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address your committee this afternoon. Um, we understand the budgetary constraints the city is facing, not only this year, but next fiscal year. Um, we just want to convey the fact that the department is fully special funded and the imposition of furlough days will negatively impact our licensing and regulation programs and have a detrimental impact on, um, generating the number of licensed businesses for next year, which will negatively impact business tax and sales tax revenue collection. Currently, eight of the department's thirty-seven authorized positions are vacant. So, we have more than a twenty percent vacancy rate. However, we are funded as if we had a one percent vacancy rate. Um, so the department can fully absorb the furlough reduction, uh, within its budgeted appropriation. So, we are requesting, um, permission to exempt our staff from furloughs to give us the opportunity to continue processing licenses and adding new businesses, which will have a positive impact on not only business tax collection, but sales tax revenue. Um, and that's all I have for you now.
Okay. And all of those positions are special funded, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the revenues generated, uh, would, uh, at least in part be general fund receipts?
No.
Is that right? I mean, some will be fees, some will be fees, of course, which will, but, um, there will be general fund benefits as well?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, all of our licensing fees go into the department's special fund. However, all of the tax monies from business taxes and sales taxes come in as an unrestricted general fund receipt.
Very good. Okay. Uh, so, yes, Mr. Kratz, go right ahead.
Um, question in terms of the services that, uh, won't be provided. Uh, I assume enforcement is, uh, part of that. So, what, what part of your, uh, your staffing relates to enforcement? And, uh, what would be impacted and not get done as a result of furloughs?
So, Jason, if I can, uh, take the lead on responding to, to this question. Uh, Council of the Court, the Department of Cannabis Regulation is specifically responsible for licensing and regulating licensed commercial cannabis businesses. Uh, of course, with that licensing and regulatory program, uh, comes the enforcement of our rules and regulations and the cannabis procedures ordinance. Uh, however, unlicensed commercial cannabis activity does not fall into the direct purview of the Department of Cannabis Regulation. We partner with other city agencies and historically, uh, have, have partnered, uh, with the Mayor's Enforcement Task Force that involves a number of different agencies, the Department- that involves a number of different agencies, the Department of Water and Power, the Fire Department, the Police Department. And this is part of the recognition, the city has a number of enforcement tools at its ready. However, the department's role in that process to date has largely been in identifying or confirming whether or not a particular business has a license or not. Once we confirm that a business does not have a license, then we communicate that to the relevant agencies and then they take the appropriate enforcement action. There is a specific request that we made in our budget request that does relate to enforcement. We were requesting two special investigators that could help support our compliance program. But I do want to be clear in articulating that even the special investigators that we requested would be to support our licensed operators, our compliance, our licensed operators. And so, we don't have any specific resources in the Department of Cannabis Regulation specifically dedicated to enforcing against unlicensed commercial cannabis activity.
So, but irrespective of that, are there any savings that we would enjoy by implementing furloughs as far as our general fund? Is there any positive impact to that?
No, sir, there's not.
Okay. Thank you. And I would, I would suggest that we consider exempting this department from furloughs as it would, as I see it, only be a negative fiscal impact to furlough this department.
All right, thank you. So, we'll request that the CLA include consideration of that point in the final report back. Mr. Blumenfeld?
Great, and I certainly agree with that notion. I mean, the COVID pandemic and the economic crisis have been felt most severely in our low-income neighborhoods, communities of color, exposing again that we need to provide economic opportunities for those communities. And this is exactly what the Cannabis Equity Program is supposed to address. I've been frustrated with the slow progress in getting the equity businesses licensed, although I'm heartened by the DCR's recent release of reports that will help get us back on track. So, we need to move the Social Equity Program forward. We need to ensure the DCR and departments that are associated, like Personnel, Fire, have the resources to make that happen. So, for DCR, does the budget provide the resources you need to move full speed ahead with Social Equity Program and licensing or temporary authority? Is there, you know, what are you missing in order to make that happen?
I appreciate the question, Councilmember Blumenfeld, and I also appreciate and agree. This is exactly why the Department of Cannabis Regulation was created. This is exactly why the Social Equity Program was created, which is to further opportunities for communities most impacted by primarily cannabis policing, but we know that that extends to other policing as well. We have centered our program around two concepts, allowing applicants to have access to licensing and then also creating programming to support them in the licensing process and once those businesses get licensed. In terms of the proposed budget, we feel as though we have the resources in what we've requested in order to move our program forward. Fortunately, and we've only been able to do this through the support of this committee and council, I do want to say thank you at this time because fortunately, we've been able to secure a number of grants from the state of California for our Social Equity Program. Over the course of the past year, we've been successful and secured approximately seven point eight million in resources from the state of California for our Social Equity Program. That coupled with resources that we have from the general fund last year, we're in a much better position this year to make progress on our Social Equity Program. We'll, for the first time, for example, have the opportunity to provide financial grants to our Social Equity applicants. And this is going to be critically important because, of course, our Social Equity applicants and other cannabis businesses still cannot bank, they're largely unable to receive the types of federal relief that other businesses are able to take advantage of in this moment. And so, the economic crisis that the city is experiencing right now, the cannabis industry has been experiencing and we have our Social Equity applicants that are trying to join this market. We want to set them up to be successful. And in order for us to do so, I think it's both a combination of us not having our hands tied administratively with the furlough, but also, as you mentioned, Councilmember, being able to cut through some of the red tape that may exist. And that means bringing our partners along, making sure that Fire and Personnel, et cetera, the agencies that we need administratively to support our licensing and Social Equity Program, any positions actually that are funded through our special fund, that those positions be exempt as well. But I'll pass it to Jason, Jason, if you have any additional information to share.
We did ask for upgrading four management assistants to management analysts, as well as upgrading to administrative clerks, two senior administrative clerks in our budget. And we did ask for two new Special Investigator II positions. All of those positions, as well as the upgrades, are part of our comprehensive fee study, which was released earlier this week in our council file two zero dash zero seven seven seven. And once adopted, it would fully fund all of those position upgrades. Those are the only requests that we had that were not included in the adopted budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Mr. Chairman, and I too want to just thank Cat and the team for working through some difficult times. This is a program lots of communities are interested in. So, I just appreciate your efforts to get this department up and running and responding to the concerns that people have. I too would join my colleagues in supporting an exemption for the furloughs of News Department. I think it should be full strength so that you can get this program up and going and moving forward. Very concerned about the Social Equity Program, as has been referenced before. And talk a little bit about the progress establishing the program with the equity grants. You mentioned the department received some, almost eight million dollars for Social Equity Programming. Give us some ideas of how you think those funds are going to be spent and what a grant program would look like.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilmember Price, for the supporting of comments. The resources specifically that we've gotten from the state of California under the California Equity Grant for local cannabis programs. There's two grants that we have been awarded to date. One grant is specifically from the Bureau of Cannabis Control. In October of last year, the Bureau of Cannabis Control announced that we were awarded one point eight million in grant funding through the California Cannabis Equity Act. There are specific restrictions related to that grant. And then on April 20th of this year, the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development announced that the department was awarded an additional six million that could be provided and to support our Social Equity Program. Each of these different grants does have with its own, does come with its own restrictions under the program. Namely, that both grants have a limit, that we're not able to spend more than ten percent of the grant on the administration of the grant. We're going to anticipate using those funds to support positions like our Social Equity Program Director, Dr. Brown. But most importantly, and I think what applicants and what the city should be most excited about with this funding is that this is going to be the first time for us to provide direct financial assistance to applicants. Our strategy in years previously, in years previous, because we had a limited amount of resources for us to focus, the resources that we had at that date on creating curriculum that could be available to all applicants. And our Social Equity Program Director, Dr. Brown, is still working very proactively now to be able to stand up what we know will likely be virtual programming, online curriculum for our Social Equity applicants. But what this is, what this money is going to allow us to do for the first time is to provide financial assistance directly to applicants. We'll be sharing additional information, both with the public and members of the city family in the coming weeks as we learn more. We actually haven't deposited one of the checks, but we're still kind of making its way through the process. But part of what we would like to be able to announce shortly is the establishment of a five million dollar grant that will be made available to Social Equity applicants. And we know that applicants are spending lots of resources as the process goes on. We feel as though, both by a combination of the financial resources that we would be able to provide and with the proposed amendment to the ordinance that we've been able to share with council recently, we really feel as though we're going to put our applicants in a position to be successful. We're going to put the city in a position to model its equity program. And that's going to be critically important in this moment. The reality is that equity is an opportunity for us to advance racial justice. We have a responsibility to do that work. We take that responsibility very seriously. And so, we appreciate both the acknowledgement of the role that this program can and should play in moving this conversation forward and the opportunity that we have to use this moment to try and empower communities who have too often been left behind.
So, aside from direct financial support, and I guess it would be a grant of several thousand dollars or some formula, in addition to that, what about technical assistance? How is that coming along in terms of assisting these equity applicants get through the process?
Yeah, so the technical assistance, the department formally refers to our technical assistance as business licensing and compliance assistance. And to date, the city through its general fund last year had allocated three million dollars to be allocated for business licensing and compliance assistance. To be completely transparent, it took us a while to deal with some of the administrative and red tape to get through the contracting process initially. But we've, Dr. Brown has been very diligent at clearing those hurdles. So, we're at a point now where we have a bench of vendors who we are prepared to, are in the contracting process right now and anticipate spending the next several months working to build curriculum that would be available in the late summer and early fall. What we anticipate as we launch new application processes in the future is that this assistance would be available both before, during, and after applicants are going through our licensing process. Because that's critically important. We've learned that applicants need support both before, during, and after the application process. And so, we're trying to create, you know, now what we know is going to have to be a suite of virtual services to applicants. But we feel as though we can leverage technology in this moment and deliver first-class curriculum to applicants that are eager to be able to do so.
Well, certainly one issue that impacts, that has impacted the applicants before the process has been the allegation that they were subject to predatory contracts in terms of their relationship with their business partner. Have we taken any special attention on that or is this part of the general technical assistance that we're providing? How has that issue been resolved?
So, it's an ongoing issue and we need to proactively address it. I don't think that there's one solution that we can implement on a particular day that's going to address it. It's going to have to be proactive engagement and addressing this is a priority, and it is a priority. I think one of the first, one of the first steps involved in the process, we feel to appropriately address this item, is going to be to change the policy itself. And... We got some feedback, all right. Thank you. So, one of the, one of the ways that we've tried to address what folks are referring to as predatory practices is through our proposed amendment of the definition of equity share itself. Part of what I would say to community members is they would engage with me and share their concerns about potential predatory practices, is I realize that we needed a better definition of equity shares. We spent a lot of time looking at operating agreements. We have the benefit now of having looked at these agreements. We spent a lot of time connecting with other regulators across the United States who have similar programs, similar provisions. And we feel as though our proposals that we recently submitted for council consideration will allow us to walk away with the nation's strongest language to protect the Social Equity applicant that seeks to protect the Social Equity applicant and ensure that there's true ownership. So, we're looking forward to engaging with council immediately to make sure that the underlying definition of equity share itself provides the department the appropriate tools to support our Social Equity applicants. Education is going to be a key component of that as well. Making sure that Social Equity applicants understand what it means to have an equity share percentage of the business so that they can leverage that knowledge to their benefit as they're engaging with different partners or folks that they may want to contract with. So, this is going to have to be an ongoing commitment. We're committed now. We're going to stay committed to this effort. What we feel as though is a multi-component solution. We look forward to working with you on every single one of those solutions.
Thank you. One last question, Mr. Chairman. The, on your, your request, page twenty of your request identifies about a hundred forty-seven million dollars in revenue to the department. As the accompanying chart on page nineteen, looks like it's a little more than a hundred twenty, maybe a hundred thirty. Is this an error or am I missing something? Page nineteen?
I'm sorry, Councilmember. Jason, do you, are you recognizing what Councilmember Price is referring to?
Yes. So, the budget assumes that there's going to be a combination of special revenue coming in from fees, permits, and licenses. That's money that gets deposited into the department's special fund. And then there's also funding that comes in from business taxes and sales taxes. In total, the city anticipates realizing between a hundred and forty and a hundred and fifty million in revenues related to commercial cannabis businesses in total. The charts are going to be a little bit off, only because the Office of Finance has been temporarily closed due to COVID-19. So, they haven't been able to collect tax monies from cannabis businesses that have historically remitted in cash. Therefore, there's a shifting of funds that are due as revenue from the current fiscal year that are basically being deferred into next fiscal year. So, that delta between the two tables recognizes that there's about seventeen million dollars in money that we would have collected this year that has shifted to next fiscal year. But in, but from the department's perspective, all of the revenues associated with our renewals that are being deferred are only going to increase the amount of money that is anticipated to be collected by our special revenue trust fund next year. So, instead of the Department of Cannabis Regulation collecting eighteen million, we anticipate collecting close to twenty-seven point six million next year because of the shifting of monies from this fiscal year to next year.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Bonin, any questions for cannabis?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for being with us and thank you for your responses to our questions. Thank you for the great work that you're doing for our city. Let me go next, please, to, sorry, one second. Okay. Next, I'd like to invite up the Information Technology Agency. Is Mr. Ross on the line?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Well, Mr. Ross, go ahead and give your introductory comments and I'm going to turn the digital gavel over to Mr. Price for a moment. But go right ahead and begin, Mr. Ross.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of this committee.
Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of this committee. I'm joined by Laura Ito, Assistant General Manager at ITA. Certainly, as you've seen, as even evidenced by handing over the digital gavel, technology has been invaluable during the COVID-19 pandemic. Over 18,200 city employees are keeping the city running through our telework platform. Our 311 call center is handling a 20% increase in calls, covering a myriad of COVID and city ordinance-related questions. ITA apps are quickly being built to handle new COVID services, such as the COVID testing app for the public, assignment of city employees as disaster service workers, and even the senior meals program that was just discussed with aging. These are all apps developed by ITA and they had to be developed quickly to handle all these new needs. In fact, as you're seeing in this virtual public meeting, it's only possible through the investments made by council. We thank you for that. And honestly, when I look at the tough economic downturn and the potential recurrents of COVID in the future, we're sure that technology will become even more important in the coming year. We're thankful for the funding that is included in the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. I think there are three key items that will be a challenge for us that are mentioned in the budget letter. First of all, citywide cybersecurity. So there are key investments and key requirements. Our ask was to appropriate some money that was mentioned in the letter in the inappropriate balance, and we were requesting for an additional $380,000 to help cover that. We actually are at a 667% increase in cyber phishing attacks since the start of the pandemic. So as you can imagine, cyber criminals are trying to take advantage. The second item simply relates to a data analytics platform. We've been doing a lot of data analysis and really in-depth predictive analytics related to the virus, related to city operations, you name it. You know, they often say the expression, "It's important to work smarter and not harder." And really, the way you do work smarter is do data analysis and become data-informed and you make, you know, data-driven decisions, as you're all familiar with. So there is a request for an additional $274,000 related to the tool. And then the last item related to salaries, as you're all hearing, and it's all very common, you know, we carry a high vacancy rate and with the salary reductions, we're expected to make it even higher. We have to go through position freezes. Even just earlier today, we're receiving requests for Department of Water and Power to pick up some of our key developers. And all of the services and items that I was expressing before, the vast majority of them are being done by city employees. We have a fantastic city workforce that we worked very hard to recruit and we develop and we're doing our very best to retain them. And so even just simple things like a promotional opportunity get frozen, and we really do require our ability to unfreeze positions. And as we go into furloughs and as we have position freezes, those really do undermine our ability to not only continue our city services, but handle all the new services that come in through the protests for racial justice, that come in through coronavirus, et cetera. So with that, we certainly would like to be open for any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Ross. And Mr. Price, I'm back. So thank you. Mr. Kreis, why don't you go ahead and lead the setup? Mr. Kreis.
Okay, well, if we didn't already know it, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If we didn't already know it, in the last three months, we've been shown that ITA plays a crucial role moment to moment in the lives of everyone in the city government. And we thank you for everything that you've done to keep us functional during this extraordinarily difficult time.
If you don't look good, we don't look...
I know you've asked for...
A little joke. A little bit out that soon. If you don't look good, we don't look good.
Well, you've asked for just under $1 million to get your vacancy rate down from 12% to 10% so you can continue to work on all these programs at an acceptable pace. I remember, one thing I believe we were told is that the city hands off something like 100,000 hacking attempts a month. I don't know if that's my correct recollection, but I know it was a large number. Can you tell us what that number actually is and how that will be impacted by the budget shortfall?
Correct. So we deal with actually over 30 million unauthorized attempts every month. And of those, we have to deal with a substantial portion that get through and we have to go ahead and resolve. So we tend not to disclose, you know, too much in our information, but as you can imagine, the internet can be a very dirty place. And without good file outs and a good cybersecurity team, it threatens people's personal information. And we know the public entrusts us with their information, whether it's related to getting a park permit or whether sensitive information regarding a sexual harassment complaint or whatever it may be. And unfortunately, you know, as we deal with even during the pandemic, like I mentioned before, 667% increase in phishing attacks. So the numbers I'm quoting here are actually pre-COVID, and so they've only increased substantially post-COVID. And what it means is that we actually have 10% less time for an already stressed cybersecurity team to chase down issues, to disconnect things from our network, to isolate, you know, malware and all those aspects. So yes, cybersecurity is absolutely one of our top three items that are impacted by the upcoming or potential furloughs.
So what happens if we don't fund that portion of your budget?
We increase our risk significantly. And so we continue to threaten and deal with aspects where we have, we have a data breach or we have an issue that comes in and undermines us. You know, the difficult aspect around the risk is sometimes it's a little hard to quantify. This is a team that has no day off. This is a team that works seven days a week, that gets called to restore and resolve items. Just a few weeks ago, at the height of some of the protests for racial justice, you know, I had to, I had to make a personal phone call to a cybersecurity team at 2:00 a.m. to investigate something that was, that was coming against LAPD phone systems. And so this is a group that never gets a day off. And having 10% less pay and being able to invest 10% less time, it does significantly increase the risk of a major data breach, which is way more costly than that 10% savings.
And just to check in on something I've asked about a number of times directly with you and I, what's the status of your funding to deal with the HRP? You still have enough funding in the budget to deal with that appropriately, since that's very concerning, one that it's done right, so we aren't exposed to millions of dollars as the result of some sort of mistake?
Absolutely. At the Information Technology Agency, we try to be very, very mindful and very cost-effective. And so you'll notice over the last five years as I've been General Manager, and by the way, I celebrate five years this last May, so time does fly. Thank you. Over the last five years, you'll notice that you don't see large investments in just simply positions and staffing. There are key areas like 311 where we did require it, but we really try to reassign and retool our staff and use them where possible to help deliver it. So for the HR payroll project, we're very fortunate to receive the funding needed for the contract and for the vendor for Workday to do the work, but the ITA actually requested no additional positions. So the issue we run into is we did not anticipate furloughs during this project. So now we'll have a project team that was already minimal but lean. It wasn't risky to go without staff, but it, additional staff, but it becomes riskier now that we're going to have to have a 10% pay cut to be able to make that happen.
And I would suggest that we look at both during the restoration of the cybersecurity portion of the budget and to ask that the individuals working on the HRP project not be furloughed. So I'd like to ask the CLA to look at both those issues.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Kreis. Mr. Bonnet. Mr. Bonnet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, with each department presentation and with each furlough letter, it just becomes clear that this is, this is the worst budget I have seen in all my, with the city. This is just really, really a rough, rough budget. And I know we're asking CLA for a lot of stuff, but there's not going to be much for them to come back with. And what's, what's, what's so troubling about this budget is the necessity of the, of the projected finance, the projected finances for next year necessitate we can't make investments that are necessary to make. And we know we are going to wind up paying more as a result. And the ITA budget is, is just one of those. It's, it's one that, that scares me the mo, I mean, I've, you can have real nightmares over the ITA budget because you can just imagine the risks we're exposing ourselves to. I, I had a couple of specific questions, but this is a, this is a general one. I don't even know if it's one you can answer, Ted. It's a, it's a more of a musing, I guess. We routinely in this committee, you know, deal with all sorts of lawsuits, trip and fall lawsuits, hazardous intersection lawsuits. And if we've gotten calls about it, we've gotten reports about it, and something happens, we're liable for a lot. In other municipalities that have had breaches and people's information was compromised, has anybody successfully brought suit against a municipality for failing to take greater precautions to safeguard people's information?
Yes, absolutely. There, you know, when we, you know, the expression we often use at the City of L.A. around cybersecurity is that we've been entrusted with the public's digital assets. This is not our data. This is the public's data, and we are entrusted to receive it and secure it. And we are held liable if we are unable to secure it in a reasonable manner. Now, fortunately, at the City of Los Angeles, we've spent the last five-plus years working under the leadership of the mayor's office as well as various council offices to really improve our cybersecurity and our cybersecurity structure. But as you know very well, what was good a year ago is no longer good this year. So cybersecurity is one of those items that you have to stay on top of. To use an example from this last summer, we had a relatively minor data breach. And the, the cost associated with providing things like credit monitoring to those affected was easily $2-plus million. And the, the amount of money required to simply have kept that system, and it was not an ITA system, but to have kept that system simply patched and secure was probably less than $10,000 to $20,000. So as you can imagine, an ounce of prevention is absolutely worth a pound of cure in cybersecurity.
Yeah, much more than a pound.
Yeah.
Much more than a pound. And the thing is, you can just imagine any number of scenarios.
Yes.
Where it's building and safety data or, or police stuff or, you know, one of the things that you won't find in your letter that scares me is the Mount Lee radio tower.
Yes.
So under, under this, you're going to have to go from round-the-clock support to two shifts a day, right?
Yes. Yes, so Mount Lee, for those who aren't aware, is one of the top terrorist targets in the West Coast. It is, it's right there by the Hollywood sign. It's well-known by Department of Homeland Security and others, and they, and they place it on a high priority list. And it's critical because it's communications infrastructure for our first responders. And, you know, today we maintain 24-hour shifts to ensure that if there's any issues, we're meeting in them very quickly. If, if without this, we expose ourselves to multi-hour communications outages. And for, for anybody who's worked in public safety, you know that a multi-hour communication outage that can impact Valley versus Metro, et cetera, is just not acceptable.
Is that the thing that would impair communications for firefighters battling a wildfire?
Yes. And ambulance dispatch and police coordination, it's hard to have a safety item...
Does it have some impact or would disable the whole system?
Absolutely. The type of communications infrastructure there would have major impact. It'd be degradation. There'd be potentially officers and firefighters who would have no communications, all the way ranging from simply poor voice quality. Depends on the infrastructure.
And you said that this is one of the top terrorist targets?
Yes, it is. That and LAX.
What would it take to go back to 24/7 support here?
The, I think it was referred to, Councilman Kreis referred to it before, it'd be the lack of furloughs for the teams that provide that support.
Okay. That's covered by the report he asked for.
Yes, we're on shoestring right now, but it, but it goes from shoestring to shoestring minus one, and that, that would not allow us to continue to do 24-hour support.
And what impact is, are we having on the 311 system?
You know, 311 is one of those items that, as I mentioned before, we've had a 20% increase in calls, and that's coming back through March. It's not just a, an occasional spike. It's consistently month after month since the start of the coronavirus pandemic. And, and as you can imagine, it covers so many items. It covers questions related to gymnasiums or bars opening up, questions related to COVID hygiene, questions related to ordinances, or questions related to people and their public safety. So there's a long list of questions that 311 gets. And so furloughs would have 10% less staffing. So it would mean significantly longer hold times, and it also likely mean that people would drop off the phone. We've been working very aggressively to keep our hold times down. So we've been getting it down to three minutes or less typically. And we've been able to capture about 90% of phone calls. But if we were to have a furloughs for the 311 team, then we would actually see significantly longer hold times and we would be far from 90% when it comes to call retention.
What are our 311 hours right now?
It's a great question. I believe it's seven to seven. So we expanded them over the last year. It used to be just pure business hours, but now we're hitting seven to seven. So at least people have a reasonable chance of getting to 311 before, after, or during work.
Would those hours change?
We'd have to reconsider that, yes, with a 10% decrease. I mean, we're doing our best. So we'd have to choose between the old outage, you know, you could punch me in the face or in the stomach, I have to choose which one. If I contract the hours, I could handle more call volume because more people would be there during the hours. But if I kept my current hours, then I'd actually just be able to have a lot more people on hold and maybe lose those calls. So going into it, we would try to keep the hours because we believe that's a promise that we're making to the public and we want to retain. But if it's bad enough, we may actually have to go ahead and restrict the hours.
What percentage of the 311 contacts we get are phone versus app or web?
I will pull that up real quick, if you don't mind. Just give me 20 seconds. So about 35 to 40% on any given month are app-related.
Hmm. Is that a trend that's been increasing?
It's been increasing. It's stabilized over the last year.
Okay, all right. And that's not affected in the same way because a lot of that is automated, right?
Correct. That is something that's really good regarding the app. It's digital, so it can get directly to the person. Now, one thing to keep in mind, that overall 311 has increased total. So here I am in a position now where I'm close to about 1.9 million total contacts a year. I remember when I started as General Manager at ITA, it was about a million. So, you know, we're almost getting to the point of doubling the total number of 311 contacts. So while it may be about 40% of them are digital, that 40% is increasing over the course of time because the total numbers are increasing.
Yeah. And I'll bet you that when some of those people drop off and can't get through, they're going to wind up on LAPD.
Right, unfortunately. We try to direct them to the app, but try to get to a voice that they could get to. And we don't, we don't like the idea of them clogging a 911 system with 311 questions.
Right, okay, all right. Thank you, Ted. I'll just say, I'm extremely comforted by seeing that the head of ITA clearly has superior video conferencing technology than the rest of us because you're the only clear picture I have in all we call on.
I sincerely appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Bummenfield.
Thank you. And first, congratulations, Ted, on five years.
Thank you.
Been, I remember well when you were starting and it's been great working closely with you on, on a whole range of different things, getting our city into the, into the digital future. And I don't want to forget your support and leadership. That's why it's painful and looking at the budget and seeing things that are going to set us back to some extent, but I, it's part of the overall issue of this pandemic. One question I've asked, I ask all the departments, but I think ITA, you might not think of as FEMA-eligible, but I think that there's a heck of a lot, you know, the entire effort that we put forward to get us, to get... to get us, to get the city during COVID online and to get remote workstations. You guys have been doing just tremendous work on that. Uh, and so first to, you know, commend you on that. But all of that potentially could be FEMA related and, and those overtime hours and those, a lot of what you've done. What are you guys doing to make sure that you maximize the FEMA reimbursements?
I, fortunately, you know, I happen to be a general manager who has a background in the controller's office. And so we are one of those departments that aggressively uses work orders and time tracking to ensure that we're allocating both supplies and equipment and contracts as well as time. And as the C A O and the mayor's office can attest to, we are constantly submitting for COVID funding reimbursement for the projects that we do. So we both track all of our costs and our information at a very accurate level so that it can be substantiated. And then we've been submitting some of those items and I, I absolutely appreciate the mayor's office who's, and the C A O who's been helping us already received some reimbursements for COVID funding.
Great, great. Um, critical for the department, but for the entire city. Uh, I also wanna just emphasize something. Mr. Corretts talked about the Human Resources Payroll Project. Mission critical for our city. Uh, despite the economic crisis, we have to keep that project on track. And whatever you need to move around to make that go, um, I know you've got a lot of mission critical projects, but that, as you know, is, is, is high among them, so.
Yes, sir. I, I don't think I'm cursed, but I happen to have been a project manager for the F M S project, which was the last time we had furloughs. And now I'm a general manager helping manage an H R payroll project in which we're having potential furloughs coming up this fiscal year. Uh, so we know how to implement big critical systems during furloughs. I don't know if that's experience that I should brag about, but it's experience that we have.
Okay, well, that's, that's some comfort. A narrow question. In the 1920 budget, you guys got 300,000 for data management program? And um, so about data analytics, what has the 300,000 gotten us so far? And if the additional funding would be for bells and whistles or would the additional funding be needed for the department to start using the system?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, so how does, how does that play in with the money we had last year and what you're asking for?
Well, I was wondering if you could weigh on that item?
Certainly, yeah. The product that we're buying is a subscription data analysis tool. So it's something where you have to pay for that, the use of that and access to that tool annually. So it's 274,000 dollars. We purchased it this year. We're just sort of learning and trying to spread the gospel of this data, this civic data platform with other city departments as well and provide training to everyone so that this can be an enterprise tool. But in order to continue using it, it's an annual subscription fee. So that's why it's really an ongoing cost.
So it's, so councilman, it's not for extra bells and whistles, but simply to maintain the, the system that is going live right now?
Okay, I didn't realize it was, it was literally a subscription cost essentially is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, members for I T A? Um, Mr. Price, did you have anything else? Okay, just to add on to Mr. Corretts's request, I guess it's another way of looking at the same thing, but uh, as we're looking at reducing furloughs or eliminating furloughs, we could also look, whether there's a way that we can reduce the salary savings rate overall for I T A with or without furloughs, so that we would have a vacancy rate closer to 10% than what we currently have budgeted. So I'd like to have that be part of the report as well. Alright, and Mr. Ross, thank you very much. Thank you for being with us and thank you for the extraordinary five years that you've given so far to the city. It really has been transformational, the leadership of this department. And there's obviously much, much, much more that we could be doing and should be doing if the resources were there. So I appreciate your, your being with us. Thank you, Ms. Mito, as well.
Thank you. Our pleasure, thank you.
Alright, um, so that will bring us to our next department, which will be the Board of Public Works. And I think we have Board President Kevin James with us. Mr. James, are you here?
I'm here. I'm trying to turn on my camera. Uh, and we have Dr. Campos, our executive officer.
Very good, welcome.
Dr. Campos, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. So you can tell, uh, Mr. Chair, at least from the video, I'm using my phone because my computer speaker on Google Meet doesn't work as well. So I'm actually talking to you even though I look like I'm on the phone.
Very good. Well, go right ahead and open up for us before we turn to member questions. Go ahead and offer your comments, please.
Uh, only just to say that we certainly recognize the, the challenges that we face this budget season. So we kept our letter really just to a couple of items with no additional funding per se other than we did wanna provide information to the committee and to the council regarding our contractual services for graffiti abatement shortfall. It's a very important service for all of you and we wanted you to know because of the increase in our hourly cost of what the general fund impact would be to maintain service at the same level. And then we expected some questions from, from your team, obviously, from your committee on the Climate Emergency Management Office, and we're here to answer those.
Alright, very good, thank you. Um, well, on that topic, why don't we go ahead and start with Mr. Corretts then?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm looking forward to working with you more closely as we ramp up on the new Climate Emergency Department. And thank you for your cooperation with that project, which I think is going to pay off a big dividends to the city and our people as it, as time goes by. Um, should we take up items two and three at the same time? Or should I discuss those when they come up afterwards?
Sorry. Uh, no, we're gonna take those, we're gonna take those motions up as part of this discussion as well. Um, so you can go ahead and ask whatever questions you'd like now. And then as we conclude, we'll go ahead and move to the votes on those items.
Okay, well, I have some comments and questions.
Go ahead.
First, I thank you, Mr. Chair, and also my co-author, Mr. Blumenfield, and the whole committee and council last week for voting to support the F S R motion to reappropriate the funds set aside in the last fiscal year for creation of the Office of Climate Emergency Mobilization. Um, when COVID hit, we were literally a week or two away from hiring the director. A pool of 29 applicants had been winnowed down to five and then we were stopped in our tracks just before making the hire. Um, I wanna remind you of the design of the office and its mission statement because it's needed more than ever. I've been working with the LEAP L.A. Coalition to create an office that engages directly with the community members on the front lines of pollution in the city. And as we've seen tragically, COVID has struck hardest with the people of color living in the most polluted areas of the city. And this office is actually designed to lift up the leadership from these communities and have them work on how the city can best address climate pollution and best address toxic pollutants while creating good, well-paying jobs and clean tech and energy efficiency, ensuring that mitigation funds get spent in these communities first and protecting workers that are adversely affected through our actions. And so as designed, we would hire the director and one staffer to oversee the community assemblies in the seven Cal EnviroScreen most polluted areas of the city. And from there, we would identify priority actions and pilot projects that, when successful, could be spread across the city. The council also created a Climate Emergency Commission, which appointees from frontline indigenous communities, um, from labor, from youth, working together with experts on climate science and air pollution, toxic and workforce, would keep the office on mission, on track in a very short timeframe we have left to actually pull off a mobilization of the city on climate while it's still timely. The 500,000 dollars from the F S R reappropriation would be used to hire the director and the staffer and to pay for the community assembly process. And going forward, we would work to restore the 200,000 for the Climate Emergency Commission, which is vital to help those who get involved pay for childcare and transportation or internet costs. And rather than set aside 300,000 for the pilot projects right now, we won't ask for that, but we'll bring the pilot projects to Budget Committee when they're fully formed and ask to fund those at a later point. So my amending motion to this, to item number three would be to move that Budget Motion 52 be approved as amended and that the C A O's report states that we have reappropriated the 500,000 into the 2021 budget and this money is available for this purpose. I'd also like the C L A to be instructed to add these positions with nine months' funding using the 500,000 dollars as a source of funds. Uh, the board has determined the cost for nine months' funding for these two positions to be approximately 170,000, but the C L A can do their own calculations as to the exact cost. I'd also like to move that these two positions be exempted from the current hiring freeze. So that would be a motion that I would. Thank you. Um, and I also had one other comment to the Board of Public Works, which is that I'm glad to see that your requests for a storekeeper and a grants analyst don't require a draw on the general fund, so we might actually be able to fulfill them. But I'm concerned that graffiti abatement funding shortfalls exist. And I know when we've seen them before, it's very problematic. It certainly has an impact also on law enforcement when we allow gang graffiti to be put up and not abated. Um, so what are the tactical impacts of the shortfall in graffiti removal as you've presented them?
Dr. Campos, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. Fernando Campos here with the Board of Public Works. Uh, Councilmember Corretts, great question. The impact for the shortfall of 433,000 is estimated to be anywhere from 3% to 5% reduction in service levels and also 3% to 5% less crews that would be out there. Just to give you an order of magnitude, um, last year we were short about 1.4 million dollars in our budget and that was because we knew that the prevailing wage determination from the Department of Industrial Relations would come in at approximately 27 dollars. Uh, the actual rate actually was adopted at 29.14, so 29 dollars and 14 cents. So basically, the difference of 433,000 dollars is the shortfall between the 27 dollar an hour that we had projected versus the 29 dollar and 14 cents that was approved by the Department of Industrial Relations. Uh, in terms of the impact, currently, right now, we are about 82% of all requests that are completed within 72 hours. Uh, 77% of those requests are completed within 48 hours and 67% are completed within 24 hours. That takes care of about 26.6 million dollars, 26.6 million square footage of graffiti that's abated in about closely to 500,000 locations. To put it in perspective, from last year, we were around 77% of all requests completed within 72 hours and a little bit about, about 25.3 million square footage was removed from graffiti. So, so again, to your question, the 433,000 is estimated to reduce our service levels by about 3% to 5%. So that would put us close to about 79%, 80% of requests completed within 72 hours.
And as, as I'm sure people mentioned many times before over the years, the value of painting out graffiti quickly is very impactful in terms of making it difficult for, for gangs to mark their territory. And having created many years ago the West Hollywood graffiti program, we not only filled requests, but we had a pretty constant troll looking for graffiti. So graffiti went up and graffiti went down and it was really virtually impossible for gangs to try and mark their territory in West Hollywood. Um, it is obviously a, a good goal for us to do the same or is close to the same in the city of Los Angeles. And it is a significant public safety impact that again, isn't, isn't directly involved with the L A P D, but nonetheless, it is a critical impact on public safety and, and crime levels to reduce gangs' abilities to mark their territory.
Absolutely. And we also see the correlation also, even with COVID-19, what we notice is, we started noticing an uptick in graffiti, in graffiti. And so we had to send our crews out there. And then also with the protests, we of course saw an increase in graffiti out there. So all the, the men and women that are part of our crew for our graffiti abatement crew have done a tremendous job, just fabulous job, just responding quickly throughout the entire city. So therefore, this additional funding would not only help with that, but also help us get back to our service levels that we need to be at. Um, also in connection with that, the reallocation of the toolroom worker position that we're looking forward to have the C L A report back on, it's allowed us to provide that higher level community beautification warehouse services. So these are the individuals that are providing the paint, the brushes, responding with our community-based organizations, providing them the supplies that they need to deploy quickly for graffiti abatement. So it's a crew of about 150 people that we have out there, 13 different contractors. So again, it's a critical service that 433,000 would help tremendously.
And I would certainly agree that it is a critical service and any way that we could help restore any fraction of that would be a positive.
Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you. Um, and so I, I was hoping the graffiti abatement maybe went down because of the stay-at-home order and I'm happy to hear that graffiti level went up during that time. Uh, first, I would support your request for a storekeeper position for the Valley Warehouse. I think that's important. I wanted to ask a question about the management analyst for the grant unit. Uh, why do you, why do you need that? Can you really absorb the cost of that position? Uh, we do coordinate especially for Public Works and L A D O T because we have so many departments seeking the same pot of money without coordinating or prioritizing applications citywide. So what's the story with that?
Yeah, absolutely. Fernando Campos again with the Board of Public Works. Uh, that's a great question, Councilman. Uh, the management analyst position currently, right now, as proposed, we have proposed to have it unfunded because we believe that we would be able to absorb the cost depending on the result of a grant application. Recently, we submitted an application with Cal Fire, working with Rachel Mallrich, our City Forest Officer, who did a fabulous job at submitting an application. Uh, about two weeks ago, we were notified that the grant itself was approved at 1.5 million dollars. That grant does include 245,000 dollars in salary and related cost reimbursement. So therefore, we believe that with the new, with the grant that was awarded to us, we just have to go through the motions of accepting it. Uh, the item is coming before the council and a couple of your committees to consider the grant acceptance process. Uh, once we accept that grant, we will have about 245,000 dollars available to offset the costs for the management analyst. In terms of your question regarding competition or even duplicating some of the services, uh, the grants unit and this position is really meant to complement and really help work together within the department and also other city departments to apply for grants. For example, the Cal Fire grant, the Bureau of Sanitation submitted an application and so did we, the Board of Public Works. We both were actually awarded the grant applications a total of about 3 million dollars, 1.5 million dollars to both. Um, we coordinated with the Bureau of Street Services. We coordinated with the Bureau of Street Services, we modeled our concepts that they would complement with each other, not necessarily compete with each other. One focused more on tree planning, whereas the $1.5 million that we were awarded is focusing more on the Urban Forest Management Plan. So it's, it's a great example to show and showcase and highlight that these grants that are available, they're good alternative sources of funds to help us offset and reduce the burden to the general fund, but it's also a testament that these grants can help us working with each other and not necessarily competing with each other, so.
Great. Well, that's, that convinced me, and certainly I want to support that request then in terms of fact, especially the fact that it's, it won't be a cost because it's going to be absorbed through the grant, is what you're telling me.
Yeah, absolutely, and I believe there's a council motion, I believe it's Council Motion Number 14 that the CLA is reporting back on, that was taken, there was an action taken by your committee last week, earlier this week. So perhaps this can be combined with that Motion 14.
Great. Just a comment on something, you know, last week, we approved in the council a regional solicitation and regional procurement portal aimed at large, in large part at enhancing contracting and subcontract opportunities for small businesses, local minority-owned businesses. And it's just not enough to provide that opportunity. We have to make it viable for the enterprises to do business with the city, and that means paying our invoices in a timely manner. Small, less capitalized businesses can't bear the cash flow burden of waiting months and months for payment. And it seems that every year, we have a tug-of-war between the Board, who says they need more staff, and the CIO, who says that they don't. And I know it's not directly a budget issue that we're going to solve before June 29th, but we've got to solve this problem. Otherwise, all of our statements about equity and opportunity are, are empty, because so many businesses are struggling to survive, particularly small businesses, minority-owned businesses, and it just, and it concerns me that particularly through, you know, a lot of the, the Board's contracts, we don't pay them on time. And I just, I don't know exactly, it's not really a budget ask, but I just have to put that out there because it's, it's a big concern.
Let me start, and then Dr. Campos can supplement what I, what I mentioned. Councilmember, thank you for the, for the point, and we obviously are very strongly in agreement with what you just said, we cannot agree more. We have spent, frankly, since we started having a slow pay on a number of these invoices that occurred because of an increase that we saw for emergency sewer repairs that just took, increased the workload of, of our accounting teams. And so we tried a number of different methods at speeding up payment. We've brought in temporary folks, that's not cheap to do when we had funding to do that. You know, we worked our focuses as much as we could. We even adopted a process at the Board of Public Works that was supported by the City Attorney's Office and the CIO's office to, to streamline the payment process to eliminate as much as we could within policy redundancy, where we didn't have too many reviews of an invoice when we had already had previous reviews of the same invoice, which of course slows it down. And we've done everything that we can, really pushing the envelope as far as we can in approval with the CIO and the City Attorney's Office, certainly drawing the interest in the process of the Controller's Office, which is obviously part of this process as well, that we need their cooperation and partnership with, and, and we've enjoyed that. And there is, and there has been the entire time that I've been here. Now, unbelievably, to be about to start year eight, after completing seven years, we have had this very consistent disagreement on the staffing needs and indeed classification of our accounting staff, and we'll let Dr. Campos talk to that a bit more. Only to say that the, something else that we had put on the table and then kind of lost the opportunity for that was to have an internal expert, if you will, come in and evaluate to the satisfaction of the City Administrative Officer's Office, the processes and the methods with which council, with which our accounting department does their work. And that's kind of the next thing we'd like to do. We lost the opportunity for that expert because they left our grasp, shall we say. But we are willing to be as creative as we possibly can within the bounds of our resources and the bounds of the law and our appropriate accounting standards to do what we can to speed these, these payments up. And it feel like with what, with the resources we have now, we've gone as far as we can with the process that has been working to some improvement, but not yet enough to eliminate the backlog. And I'll finish there, and Dr. Campos, she can supplement with anything you'd like to say.
Yeah, I don't really have much more to add, President James, on that, but one thing that I do want to highlight is that more and more capital infrastructure projects are coming on board, more and more invoices are coming forward, more and more requests are coming forward, yet our staffing levels do not necessarily increase. We do have a difficult time retaining the accountants, the classification itself. We have anecdotally heard from many accountants that leave us, that they can go to a different department and work less for more money. And so that, that becomes very challenging. The Department of Public Works is the second largest department, we have a $1.3 billion plus in our budget, everything goes through, all the finances go through the Board of Public Works, so we are a centralized finance, accounting function for the entire five bureaus and the board offices. So therefore, retaining the staff becomes more, much more difficult. In addition to that, we have recently noticed an uptick and increase in unfunded projects that are coming on board, for example, Measure W, also SB1 homelessness initiatives. Those are things that we are observing, absorbing with the current resources without any new additional resources. And we are being asked to pay faster, sometimes 15 days, as opposed to the 30-day city policy. So we continue to do our best, we continue to work and look at creative, creative ideas and innovative ideas to streamline the process. But I agree with our President James with having that expert come in and doing an independent workflow study and find out, what do we need, how can we improve it, what processes can be eliminated, and how can we get the payments out to the vendors, because we do pay about $2.2 million per day. So we are a huge economic engine for the city of Los Angeles, and that needs to be recognized. The men and women in our office do a tremendous job at getting these payments out as quickly as possible, understanding that sometimes we have issues with some invoices and we have some hiccups that we have to deal with. But overall, we are a huge economic engine to the city of Los Angeles, and appreciate your support.
Absolutely, no, and, and I look forward to working with you all through the Public Works Committee on this, and I just, I, I put it out there because everything that's going on, it, there's also a very strong equity lens here in that, in that the timeline really does cut out a lot of folks who we are trying to uplift out of the process, and there's so much good contracts, jobs, money flowing through, that we just don't, we don't want to see that happen. Last question is more specific, and about the Clean and Green Program, this program was cut from a million to 500,000. Of course, this is exactly the kind of investment in disadvantaged youth that, that we want to see. So if you could explain to me a little bit about that, the rationale of that, and how, how do we, how do we deal with that, that particular cut? I mean, that's, that's a very steep cut in a very important program.
It is a very steep cut right now with COVID. The number of volunteers and the number of youth workers that we are hiring through our community-based organizations definitely has decreased. What we're trying to make sure is that everyone that does come on board is completely protected, that we're bringing folks that are, that, that are, that have the personal protective gear available, that we're keeping them physically, socially, and distanced from each other. So we have noticed a decrease in the program in terms of the impact from a million dollars to half a million dollars. We do know that it's going to have an impact to the Clean and Green Program with the Los Angeles Conservation Corps. The exact number of volunteers and student workers, I would have to report back to you on that, councilman, regarding what the impact would be in terms of number of jobs and number of individuals that would be retained or would have to be reduced with that $500,000 reduction.
Yeah, and is there any way to, to offload some of those costs to FEMA and some of these emergency relief programs? Because there's a lot that, that Clean and Green folks could do, sort of related relief work.
Definitely, we can work with the CIO's office to determine if some of those services are eligible or allowable to be reimbursed under FEMA, so we can reach out to CIO's office to determine if those services can be deemed reimbursable, and if so, then definitely we can leverage that.
Great. And just by, my normal comment to all the departments, please look at, at your, your budgets with that lens, because it's easy to, it's outside of the normal work that you do, but, but it can mean a lot to your department and a lot to the city to maximize that, those reimbursements. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenthal. Members, other questions? Mr. Bonin?
Mr. Bonin? Just one, talk to me about petroleum administrator. It's vacant, right?
Yes, absolutely. This is Fernando Campos again. The position did become vacant last November of 2019. We did release a bulletin to recruit the position. Back in March of 2020, we did receive three applicants for that recruitment effort, and then COVID hit, COVID also, and then the Belt Lightning Memo was released, putting the hiring process on freeze. We did receive recently an approval from the CIO and the Mayor's Office to move forward with the hiring of the petroleum administrator. However, there was a condition, and that is to release and recruit someone from within the city, in existing city employees. So therefore, we re-released the recruitment within the city website, and we have the applicants, or the deadline to, to apply would be July 24th. So we are going through a secondary, I know, I know, we're going through a secondary recruitment process, but we do have three applicants that applied, but they're all external to the city of Los Angeles.
Where did the, the crazy nutty idea come from to do the internal application? This is an incredibly, incredibly difficult position to fill. It is remarkably specialized, you need somebody who actually knows the, the petroleum industry, who is not beholden to it. Where did the idea come from, that this person existed somewhere in the city department?
You know, I, I would have to defer to the CIO's office, or if someone from the Mayor's Office is on the line, I can, I'll defer to them in terms of how that condition came about, but we did receive the approval on Monday, this, this, this Monday.
Might I add one thing to supplement that as well? Mr. Councilman, we, right before COVID hit, because we had received just the three applicants, we were exploring, because we had some salary savings and things, that we could spend a little bit of money to recruit further for additional, to try and have a, a bit of a broader reach, a wide, more wide-ranging reach to capture a larger base of, and larger pool of candidates, to spend a little bit of money recruiting, and then COVID hit, and, and that was the, that was the end of that, even though those, those funds were in essence earmarked for that, for that process. And then, of course, we, we received the information that Dr. Campos just referenced about hiring internally. We're, and by the way, we are in communication with, with at least the Mayor's Office. I don't know if the CIO's Office is in those communications as well, but I've been in touch with the Mayor's Office on trying to find a workaround to that, so we can continue a, a broad base of a search for a candidate.
Yeah, as, as one of the, the initiators of the motion that led to the creation of the petroleum administrator position, I'm just going to say flat out that the, the direction from the, the CIO to start looking internally is, is completely a violation of the spirit of that position. This used to be a position that was handled within the CIO's Office, and it wasn't what we needed. We need someone who can be looking at, at, at groundbreaking landmark legislation to, to prohibit oil drilling in neighborhoods in Los Angeles, as well as dealing with all the, the franchise agreements. I mean, it's a really complicated position. We, we do need to be going wider, if anything. We can't just hire the, the best of, of who we got if, if it's not the right person. So currently, the position is unfrozen, so I don't need to make a motion to unfreeze it. But what, what needs to be done in order to, to allow you to, to, to conduct a wider search?
Councilmember? This is Patty Huber from the CIO's Office, and in answer to your question, the Mayor's Office is the one who, in unfreezing it, directed that it be limited to looking internal unless first, and then they could come back and request external if they could not find an internal candidate. That was not something that our office imposed.
Good to know. If, it could be the mayor, it could be the pope, or it could be my mother, it's the wrong direction. It's just not what the point of the, the position is. Well, let me, can, can you let me know, Kevin, or, or Dr. Campos, what I need to, to do to try to fix this? You don't need to do it right now, we're not voting on the budget today, but we gotta, if you could come back and tell me what needs to be done to fix that, because...
No, I'll have a follow-up conversation with my, the person I'm speaking with in the Mayor's Office on that. And by the way, councilman, just so you know, our conversation was headed in exactly the direction that you've asked about, finding a way to increase the pool by going outside. So we'll, we'll get that information to your office as soon as possible.
I mean, this is why, I mean, we're, we're voting in a few minutes on, on Mr. Coretts' push for the climate mobilization stuff, which I am strongly in support of. This was a conversation that Mr. Coretts and I were having about, about climate stuff, you know, four or five years ago, and, and we have this thing in the city where we do something, and then three years later, it doesn't exist, and this is, I don't want this to be one of those things. We've got to do some stuff on this, so very much look forward to a report back on that.
And to your point, councilman, you know, the, the reason we're in the search again is our previous petroleum administrator was hired by the state.
Exactly.
Went to head up CalGEM, so that's an example of, of the level here, yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. So before we go to Mr. Coretts on this, just one quick follow-up on that. When the search was initiated, anyone who's currently working for the city in any position could have participated as an applicant in that search, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So I, I can't understand what could possibly be gained by this, in that anyone with the qualifications and the interest would have already applied. So, okay, Mr. Coretts.
Yeah, I, I couldn't more aggressively and enthusiastically second Mr. Bonin's comments. I also looked at this for years, and one of the, the reasons why we hired a petroleum administrator was there were so many things that we couldn't do. We'd ask in a motion to take a step, and we would be told, you can't do it, we don't have the expertise, we can't even consider it. We need a petroleum administrator that has this level of expertise. And it wasn't easy, there aren't many people out there in the entire universe that are expert in the oil industry, but willing not to be a shill for the oil industry. And it, it is not surprising that when we finally found someone who was really capable and perfect for the job, that they would now be in charge of the industry at the state level, because it's so unusual to find somebody competent. To have someone in City Hall, when we hired this position because we didn't have the expertise in City Hall. So at, at worst, right now, we have people there in the interim who have been trained by our former petroleum administrator. So for as long as we need to find someone of the expertise that we're looking for, we have the next best thing on an interim basis, someone that's, that's trained, but also doesn't necessarily have the high level of expertise and the objectivity that we're looking for. It's hard to find such a person, and it will take a lot to find another one like that. But we're sure as hell not going to find it in City Hall. That, that's one of the more bizarre things I've heard, and I don't think I would, would vote to accept such a person if they went through the process in City Hall, because I just know we don't have the level of expertise that we're looking for. So I, I agree, we have to find some way to communicate that. Hopefully, we can just communicate it to the Mayor's Office and have them work with us again to do a more robust search and find the right person, presuming they exist somewhere out there in the world.
And we did, and three, go ahead, Dr. Campos, and I'll finish up on that.
We, we did receive three applicants, and all three applicants are, are, are good contenders. We would just like to expand our recruitment efforts to more, to utilize more fee-based recruitment portals, so that we can increase the number of candidates to apply. Last time, just to give you some perspective, background information, last time we recruited for this position, back in 2016, we received about five applications. So this time around, we got three, we'd like to at least get another two or three or four good qualified candidates, so that we can have a good selection and a good interview process.
That, that sounds much better than picking from the people we have in City Hall. Again, a mistake that just wouldn't make this, this position workable.
Agreed.
But we were also optimistic for a couple of reasons. One, you know, it's an amazing place to work, obviously, the city of Los Angeles, but two, looking at where they, our previous petroleum administrator ends up heading up CalGEM, so that demonstrates the pathway that can exist here. And let me just close the answer to your question, councilman, on making one point that you alluded to. The interim petroleum administrator that we've, that we've had in place, in the absence of the petroleum administrator, working with a, obviously a smaller staff right now, has done, we think, a great job keeping up with the demands of the office, given the resources that we have. But we're certainly anxious in, in the, the widest range possible for a candidate pool.
Sounds good to me. Sounds good to me.
Okay, I'm confident that the mayor's office is probably listening in. I'm further confident that the president of the Board of Public Works will convey the sentiments of the committee on this topic. Um, any other comments or questions? Members, Mr. Price?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, uh, uh, want to, uh, just chime in on, on two comments my colleagues made. One, uh, about the need for getting folks paid, uh, in a more timely way. Uh, I think this is really critical, especially when we're working with, frequently, uh, we're working with small, community based organizations, providing real necessary services, uh, and I've gotten calls, as I'm sure we all have, about problems in just processing the paperwork, and so, uh, anything we can do to, uh, streamline that process or make it, uh, more accessible, I think everyone would benefit. Uh, so just keep that in mind.
Thank you, sir.
The, the second is on the graffiti of vacant, uh, and I again agree with my colleagues, this is a real quality of life, uh, issue, uh, literally, it, in addition to cleaning up our neighborhoods, it does support the number of community based organizations that, that, that provide these services, uh, with, uh, a variety of, workers with a variety of skills, and so we want to do all we can, uh, to, uh, I think, help, uh, restore any funding for this program, uh, where possible, uh, and expand it. Uh, again, it's a, it's a tangible quality of life issue that, uh, is visible, uh, and it tends to have an impact. You know, knocking it down right away sends a message to the community and to gangs. Uh, and so again, I think it's a program that, uh, that we should seek to support, uh, and make sure that resources are there for these organizations and for our communities. It is a big problem. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Price, anything further? Members? Okay, so we had a motion by Mr. Kretz on item number three, uh, and then on item number two, um, I think we can just, uh, go ahead and simultaneously note and file that item, and then, uh, vote on Mr. Kretz's motion on item number three. That, is that right, Mr. Kretz?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. Uh, well, let's go ahead and do that, um, please call it over.
The Corian.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Kretz.
Aye.
Blumenfeld.
Aye.
Bonin.
Aye.
My vice, this, I am the priest, as amended.
Very good. Uh, thank you very much, uh, members, and, uh, thank you, um, uh, Mr. James and and Dr. Campos, thank you for that presentation, thank you for the great work that you both do, uh, for our Public Works Board. Um, and let's move next.
Thank you to the committee.
Thank you. Our final, um, department for the day is, uh, Department of Building and Safety.
Uh, good afternoon, NMA Uten from the Department of Building and Safety. Uh, can you hear me?
Good afternoon, yes, we can hear you, uh, perfectly.
Thank you. So I am joined by Veronica Salimides, our, uh, chief management analyst over budget. So we would like to take the opportunity to, uh, thank the mayor and the council for supporting our department. Uh, the adopted budget provides the critical resources and sufficient flexibility for LADBS to manage, um, our operations for next fiscal year. Our department is, uh, funded ninety-two percent by special fund and eight percent by the general fund. Although we did receive a sorry cuts of about two point four million, uh, the department does not have any furloughs for next fiscal year. Um, so we are very appreciative of that. Um, we're here to answer any questions you may have with the department.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, questions? Members, your comments? Mr. Kretz?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just one, I remember in your budget letter, you said your department was fairly stable, um, and, uh, that you were satisfied with, uh, with the allocation of the budget. Has anything changed since, uh, uh, you've been hit hard, as we all have, by COVID, uh, during the ensuing period of time?
Um, no, at this time, we are fairly stable. We had looked at the stats that we received out this past May. Overall, uh, with regards to the number of permits that were issued, we were only down by about four point three percent, and with regards to plan check submitted, we were only down by four percent, even with, uh, the limited, uh, operation.
And I know that, that your department was assigned, uh, and I don't know what a lengthy period of time it was in which they did this, but I know they checked, uh, virtually every construction site in the city at least once for COVID compliance. Uh, did that impact you budget wise? Um, and how did that turn out?
It turned out pretty well. I mean, we are part of the ambassador program, and, uh, during also the, um, the recent, um, issues, uh, we were asked to, uh, look at the, the friends, um, I guess, this is this, to make sure that they are in compliance with the mayor's COVID nineteen emergency order. So with regards to budget, it didn't really affect us, because all of our, um, inspectors are funded with the, uh, enterprise fund, and the ones that are funded with, um, the general fund, we, they're the ones who are mainly, uh, assigned to do the ambassador program. So what we pretty much did is that we made sure that, um, for those issues with regards to code enforcement, we pretty much inspected the ones that are specific to health and safety.
And so there, there wasn't a budget, significant budget impact, it was all done with existing, uh, inspection staff?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blumenfield?
Just, just to follow up, um, and it's the, the topic I'm, I, um, you know, beating dead horse about in terms of the FEMA funding. So all of those inspections that you did with regard to COVID, are you submitting those for FEMA reimbursement?
That is correct. We are working with the CIO. We created several work orders to cover the different, uh, ambassador, um, I guess, ambassador, ambassador program, the DSW, uh, activities out there. So we created work orders for that, and we are sending those reports to, uh, the CIO, uh, on a biweekly basis.
Great, thank you. Mr. Price, anything for DBS? Or, Mr. Bonin? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much. That was probably the quickest and easiest review of DBS that we've had in years. Thank you very much for being with us, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, um, so then, uh, that completes our review of departments for the day. Uh, if there's no objection, we will continue item one, consideration of the overall budget forward to our next meeting. Uh, is there any other business before the committee?
The desk is clear.
Any, any other, uh, requests or comments by members? All right, seeing none. Mr. Blumenfield?
Yeah, on, on the Clean and Green Program back one department, uh,
Yes.
I don't know if we formally asked, but, but just, uh, I mean, I'm interested in restoring that funding. I know it's got to be one of the difficult choices and options, but I just wanted to make sure that the, uh, that that's one of the things they're looking at when they bring us options back.
Okay, very good, thank you. The, I'm sure the CLA will note that for the final report.
Thank you.
All right, anything further, members? Very good. With that, we are adjourned. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.